Good evening, everyone here and at home. Welcome to our October 28th, 2024 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are here at our beautiful Town Hall in the upstairs meeting room. If you wish to join us and you're not already here tonight, you are welcome to come on down. In addition, the Zoom link is available on the agenda posted on the Town website. If you want, I mean, you can also watch through Facebook or however else it's being shown on public access. But if you want to chime in, either get down here or log in on Zoom and we'll be happy to hear from you. This meeting is being recorded and I think that's everything we're legally required to say to have a meeting. So with that, I will call us to order. If someone wants to lead us in the pledge, they may. We have looks, if you've been following on our agendas, the format has changed a little. Looks like a pretty full agenda, but I think more medium on the grand scale of things. Just the way it's listed in the paper gets a little longer. But we will dive in. We're going to open with public comment for those who might be here for the first time or not as frequent flyers for the planning board. So the initial public comment is for things, generally speaking, not related to the upcoming public hearings. If you're here to comment on an upcoming public hearing, then we will take your public comment on that then. Also, in addition, we often are very happy to receive public comment and thoughts at times outside of the officially required times. If you have a question or something, raise your hand. We'll, we'll get to you if, if time allows and if it's appropriate outside of the times. We're definitely going to get to you. Any public comment?
Like I said earlier, we're here just for the cause.
Yeah. So seeing, I know that most people are here for one of the upcoming public hearings and we'll take care of that. No worries there. And friends on Zoom, don't forget to use that raise hand feature if you want to speak. Could I just hear from Ms. Reed to make sure that the audio is working and everything?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. Ms. Reed is our fifth planning board member. She's attending remotely tonight. That means all votes will be taken by roll call, procedural thing. And Amanda, I will be calling on you last for each vote to give you a chance to unmute.
Perfect.
Great. With no public comment, we will dive into our chair and directors' reports. Chris, do you want to share anything first or I can talk about some of it? Great.
Yeah, if you want to start first and I can fill in afterwards, it's whatever you prefer.
Okay. There's updates on the master plan. I haven't looked, had a chance to look in detail at your document yet, but there, just as a few things for the public to know, the master plan process continues to move forward and there is a new survey out. I encourage everyone to please, I mean, if you're a Lunenburg resident, please take that survey at planlunenburg.org. You go there, there's a nice obvious link to the survey. And well, again, what you'll notice is this builds on the previous surveys and there'll be a survey, a public info meeting, a survey, a public info meeting, every time kind of first taking ideas from the community and refining them. We're in the home stretch for master planning and that means that these surveys are getting much more specific on your opinions about the future of this town. Master plans are supposed to last 10 years on paper. In practice, they're off in 20 years easily. So you want to get your voice heard. Go to planlunenburg.org, take that survey. You're going to see flyers in the coming days up around town to remind you as well. Are there printed copies available at the planning office for that?
There are.
Okay. And so if you can't do electronically, swing by the planning office. I believe there's some at the Eagle House Senior Center, our adult activities center as well. If there's not, I'll make sure we get some there for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just-
Go ahead.
-add a little bit more. I know we have a packed agenda, but so are you all familiar with what a master plan is? Okay. So you know, we're updating ours as the chair has described. And so our next big meeting, public meeting and final meeting is going to be December 4th in the library. And it'll be at 7:00 PM. It'll be right in the main hall there. So if you could really find the time, I know you're all busy, but if you could find the time to help us get some more input and finalize this thing, then it's going to be an important document for the direction of the town and having a really legally strong basis for some of the decisions that the planning board makes. So we really count on your input and need your input and are interested in it. So it's your community, your future. So please come December 4th. But in the meantime, if you can fill out the survey, our consultant will take that information and it all goes into a master plan that is going to have goals and recommendations and action items. And those will be important about the next 10 years of Lunenburg. So please get the word out and, and if you have the time, we'd really appreciate it on December 4th, join us at the library. That's all I have on that.
Great. I'm happy to let you speak to some of the other topics as you deem appropriate.
Yeah, so this is a director's report. I don't know if you've done something like this, but this is typically what I do as a land use director wherever I am. It's been a few places, but so I just run down some sort of administrative and planning items just to update the board on what's going on in the planning function. And so lately our priorities have been the fees review status. We're looking at updating our fees. They're kind of all over the place and I got to give Logan, you know, a lot of credit here for trying to straighten them out and apply them, but we need some consistency and we need to update them so there's clarity for everyone, for the applicants and for the board as well. So these are the fees that the applicants pay. Money's important to come into the budget so that we don't have to ask you for more money and, you know, come town meeting. So there's that and I'll have a draft fee schedule for you probably in the next meeting. You can review it. Obviously nothing's going to happen without your input. And then from there, once we agree on the fees, after some input from our regional planning agency, they do fee surveys, we'll take that data and you can look at it and then we have to have a public hearing for you to approve them. Some fees are going to go up, some will probably, most of them will probably remain the same, but we'll sort and organize everything. So you understand it, we understand it, the applicants understand it and the public understands. So that's that. Update on the MBTA zoning review with our regional planning agencies. Everybody know what the MBTA zoning is? This is a state statute that is requiring a lot of communities that are served by the MBTA to adjust their zoning around, you know, public transportation in a variety of forms so that it allows more housing by right. And so this is a controversial subject. I'm sure some of you have talked about it or are aware of it. The planning board needs to move forward by December 2025 and come up with some planning that meets the statute or we decide as a, as a community, we don't want to abide by that statute. And then funding is at risk, but nonetheless, we're going to have some public information sessions, zoning workshops. We're going to come to the public with everything we're considering, all the options the planning board has before them. You're going to know everything and you're going to know what's at stake. So we'll be doing that in the next 79 months for Fall Town Meeting. We want to get the master plan done and have that sort of inform everything that moves forward from there, but this is a big controversial thing. You've read about it in the paper, I'm sure, and it affects Lunenburg. So we're going to try to do our best as planning board to serve your interests and to try to comply with the law, but you have options and we're going to review them. So that's that. Any questions on that? Nope. The 2025 work plan. So this is what I'm talking about here. I mentioned it the last meeting. It's something I generate for the pleasure of the board. It's your priorities. It's how I track and, and you know, sort of remain accountable to you so that you're seeing what you want as a board member. So I have a 2025 work plan. You can see it's pretty limited right now, but by all means, please give me your input about your priorities. We've talked about some of them that we have to do, but your volunteers up here are serving your town, you know, to the greatest degree. So it should be fun too. So let's, let's talk about that. And you can see everything here, including the ADU zoning. This is the accessory dwelling unit zoning that would have been in the town meeting, this town meeting. It's another state statute that allows accessory dwelling units by right, but it needs more work. Town council advised us, we need to clean up a lot of stuff for legal reasons and just to serve your interests as best we can. Working with another state statute, sort of a decree, but trying to get as much of Lunenburg's interest in it as is legally allowed. That's, that's what we're looking at there and that'll come to an annual town meeting. Town meeting presentation, we talked a little bit about that. Mr. Chair, you're going to do it. You're the most knowledgeable person I know about it.
Yep.
And everybody, the public's had a lot of chances to weigh in, but it'll be open town meeting. And so, you know, if you need any support leading up to that, let me know, but I think we're in good hands. That's all I have. Anything else?
I maybe swing by the office to do some of that building there, just because, building the deck and everything there, just because, when the conference room's available because-
Always, yeah.
-it's sometimes easier to work in a space that isn't your kitchen table.
Yes.
Great.
If the mustard's on the table. All right, that's, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board before we go on? All right. Super. Then we'll get on to public hearings. It sounds like most people who are here are here for the public hearing for 494 Electric Avenue, which also happens to be our first one on the agenda. So perfect, don't need to rearrange. This is, we'll be opening the public hearing tonight. Ms. Reed, are you good for reading our intros tonight as clerk or would you rather someone else took care of that?
I'm fine. I can read them as long as everyone can hear me.
Yep. Great.
Okey dokey. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on recording in progress. 28th, 2024 at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for stormwater management permit pursuant to 204-1D of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the November 17th, 2020 special town meeting by D&amp;A Lunenburg LLC for redevelopment of 494 property for reconfigured parking, construction of an additional parking lot and a commercial structure. An application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the May 7th, 2016 annual town meeting by D&amp;A Lunenburg LLC for redevelopment of 494 property for reconfigured parking, construction of an additional parking lot and commercial structure. Subject property information, the location is 494 Electric Avenue, assessors map 113, parcel 18, and assessors map 98, parcel 38. Owner is D&amp;A Lunenburg LLC, 494 and 0 Electric Avenue. I'm assuming that's Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. Materials are viewable at the planning office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Great. Thank you. And so what we're going to do, we're going to hear from the applicant. We're going to then give initially the board a chance to ask any initial questions, make initial comments. Once we get through that, then we will open up for public comment and we'll go from there. Great.
Okay, great. For the record, Chris Anderson with Hanny Engineering here in Bev, D&amp;A Lunenburg LLC for site plan approval for the construction of a commercial building as well as reconfiguration of an existing parking lot associated with an existing business. As was read during the advertisement, the property is located at 494 Electric Ave as well as what's technically considered 10 Lakeview Drive or Lakefront Avenue, which is a remnant of back when the property was associated with Lake Wayland amusement park. But effectively, the property is, contains an existing restaurant facility, the Al Forno Restaurant at the 494 Electric Ave property. The other property along Electric Ave is currently undeveloped. It's comprised primarily of brush and new growth. Based on aerial photography over the years, it appears that the site has gone through various iterations of clearing and not clearing and regrowth and everything like that. It's been used as a staging pile for many, many years. So at this point in time, the front portion of the site has been relatively disturbed due to movement of earth and the back portion is predominantly new growth woodland. There is a area subject to Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Lunenburg Bylaw, Wetland Bylaw near the back portion of the property. So we are going in front of Conservation Commission as well for work within those jurisdictional areas. But the general intent of the project is to construct a new parking lot for the Al Forno facility as well as construct a new commercial building on the property as well. Just to help move the process along for this review, I'll start with the Al Forno property itself. Currently, the property does have an extensive parking lot area, most of which is noncompliant with the current zoning regulations, but is preexisting, nonconforming. There are on certain occasions-
May I pause you for one second for a quick definition for everyone here? Preexisting, nonconforming, just, you're going to hear that term here, you might hear it other places, just means it doesn't meet the current regulations by the town. That's cool because it was there before those current regulations. That's all.
Okay. But effectively, as you said before, preexisting, nonconforming, and it's noted on certain occasions, the parking lot does become filled to capacity. So as part of that, we're looking to expand upon the parking on the undeveloped portion of the property across Pierce Ave. We're intending to recreate the parking on the actual 494 lot to be zoning compliant and provide surplus parking on the 10 Lakefront View property on the other side of Pierce Ave. That will all be zoning compliant relative to dimensional requirements. We are noting that we are requesting a waiver from the setback from a residential district. By code, you're required to have 40 as shown, we're showing 20 feet off the zoning setback line. This is the zoning line, not a property line. But effectively to offset that reduction in the offset requirement, we are proposing to construct a six-foot solid wall fence immediately along the edge of the parking lot and then between the fence line and the residential zoning district line, provide additional evergreen plantings to help buffer further that parking lot configuration. Access to this new parking lot will be provided off of the way known as Pierce Ave. This will be create a loop configuration with one means of egress onto Pierce Ave with a sidewalk connection to the 494 restaurant as well for pedestrian access. We're providing stormwater management based on the current state regulations, as well as the local bylaw. And it's our understanding that it's gone to peer review for engineering. So we're still waiting that comment back. And that would be effectively what we're calling the 494 portion of the property. In addition to that, we're looking to construct a commercial structure of approximately 6,300 square feet on this, effectively the south side of the property. This will be serviced by its own separate driveway entry with a loop configuration with the applicable parking. Based on the most restrictive parking requirements, we're required to have 26 spaces. We're showing 29. So we are meeting the, are the parking requirements for that. And effectively this all ties into one system relative to stormwater management, which will utilize an infiltration basin closer to the rear portion of the property. I will note, the property is also being further subdivided into two lots pending favorable action by the board. Effectively what we're doing is we're creating one lot, which would be exclusively the commercial zoning district with all the associated amenities I just went over a moment ago. And the second lot would be exclusively the residential zone portion of the property, which would be potentially developed into future state, but there's no immediate intentions to do so at this point in time. With that being said, there are some concerns relative to Pierce Ave, relative to its status, if you will. Jeff Avini with the applicant's attorney is here tonight. If there's any questions relative to that, we did provide a legal review of that as part of our middle package. So if that is a question with the board, we can address it at that point. But effectively at this point in time, we're here for initial comment gathering information at this point so that we can acquire all the information that we need and address the comments raised by town departments and peer review when that does come in so that we can provide one comprehensive plan set for the board to review.
All right. So I just have initial procedural question. It, it sounds like, so you're talking about dividing off lots pending favorable review from the board. So if we were to do the site plan review, then there would be an A and R following? Do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Procedurally, is there any issues with?
Nope.
Okay.
There'll be lots in common ownership. They can create those after a permitting approval.
Okay. Great. I wanted to make sure that we're good there. All right. I'm going to have some questions and I, I think I will not be the only one about Pierce Ave to get a better understanding of that because it's certainly confusing to me.
Yep.
But before we get to the Pierce Ave segment, I want to just turn to the board and say, do we have other initial questions or thoughts to share out loud before we get to the Pierce Ave? And once we've talked about and then gotten board thoughts on this and the Pierce Ave component, then we'll go for public comment.
Do we have a copy of that layout? Because the only thing I can locate is what was put in the staff notes for the day.
Uh, yes. You, you need to go into SharePoint.
Uh, see, I downloaded everything.
That is a, okay.
Yeah. Okay. I forgot we were moving to SharePoint.
Yep.
Thank you. I'll take care of that.
You mentioned doing 20-foot, not 40-foot setback. Where was that again?
So that would be located along Pierce Ave. The zoning line effectively runs along the roadway system. So we're requesting a reduction down to 20 feet in order to fit the parking into that area to offset that, you know, encroachment, if you will, for lack of a better term. We're intending to put a solid wall fence between the parking and the zoning district line. So there's a permanent physical barrier preventing any kind of light shine or intrusion going on to Pierce Ave itself. And then to help offset and create more of a naturalized appearance, putting evergreen plantings between the fence and the zoning district line to help break up the fence so you're not looking at a solid wall vinyl fence at the end of the day.
I'm going to have some questions because I don't think I fully understand the technicalities of that a little bit, but I think understanding the Pierce, for me, understanding the Pierce Ave component will be helpful before I go on that route. Any other questions before we move on? All right. Seeing none, I would ask, so I, I think in the, in the common understanding of people, I think they look at Pierce Ave and think it is a public right of way, a public road. And I understand that you're going to explain to us why, I'm not looking to cast out, I'm just going to say why you feel that's not the case. We'd love to hear it.
Okay. I will invite Mr. Avini up. He is the attorney. He's done the research and everything that, that associated with that component.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, the board. Attorney Jeff Avini, I represent the applicant. And I will tell you, before we started the process, we had attorney Joe Pellegrini do a complete title examination about Pierce Ave. He drafted an opinion letter as part of your package. So the simplistic way to look at this is that if you go to Town Hall, there is a series of votes, if you go through your records, and the votes talk about Pierce Ave. Those votes were never brought to the registry of deeds and recorded to indicate Pierce Ave was taken. There's one small section down the end of Pierce Ave that was taken, but the point in question here directly across the street from where the restaurant is was never taken. So it's a little bit of a legal anomaly because I think the town believed they took it. They never did. Your bylaw talks about your parking has to be all in the same lot. So by definition, we have one big lot. When D&amp;A buys this lot across the street, the title merges, we have one lot. What's somewhat interesting is I've got a certified, a butter's, a certified street listing from your town clerk and they say Pierce Ave has been accepted. So it's a little bit of a conundrum because it was never taken, but your town has accepted it. So for the benefit of my client, we have one lot and Pierce Ave has been accepted. So we're going to take the benefit of what your bylaw says and say we're going to parking on one lot because that's exactly what we have.
Hmm.
So if, again, if you read, I can go through attorney Pellegrini's opinion letter. It's, it's pretty straightforward and he identifies what he's done.
I think that would be helpful both for the board-
Sure.
-and as well as for everyone here in, here in the room and at home.
Okay. So again, attorney Pellegrini, he's a title abstractor. He's been doing this 30, 40 years. Did a complete title abstract, which means he goes to registry of deeds, he runs the city back, he runs your butters back, he runs all the prior owner backs, and he looks for deeds out to the city in relation to Pierce Ave, or he looks for what's called a taking or a layout. None of that was located except for one small piece towards the end where I think there's a, or there was a DPW type facility. I'm not exactly sure what that was. He then, I'm sorry. Water Department. I'm sorry, Water Department. He then backs in, puts an abstract together and does a report. As he's doing that report, again, he's looking to see if Pierce Ave was never taken and he, and he concluded that it was not, especially in front of where our lot is directly across the street from the new six acre lot that we purchased about a year and a half ago. So now we have what's called merger of title, the titles have merged. And under your bylaw, we have one lot. So in order to pull this plan together, so we have one lot to put our parking on, legally that's what we have is one lot. Because it's not the registry of deeds that says the Town of Lunenburg took Pierce Ave directly across the street from where our locusts is. On the other hand, the town believes it was taken because in your registered certified street listing, it says Pierce Ave is an accepted lot.
And how long ago are we talking about here?
Back until I think the early 1900s.
But I mean, so when did?
We took the votes and he ran them up from we had the votes. Some of the votes go back to the 1900s.
Uh, go back to the 1800s or 19?
Well, I think he, he went back as far as the votes, we could find a record at the, at the Town Hall.
When does the town believe it took possession of Pierce Ave?
Well, not possession, when they actually, they took it, it would be sometime-
Sure.
But there was different takings, different sections, but the plans and the descriptions aren't that great. Sometime around 1901, 1910.
Okay.
But we've covered all, he covered all those periods in his, in his research.
I, I'm taking a moment to just kind of look at everything.
It's not an easy thing to get your head around, Mr. Chairman, I would agree.
Mr. Chair, if I make a question?
Please.
Do we have a copy of that report?
Yeah, it's in your package. Yeah, it's in your package.
Okay. I didn't see that.
I can give you, I have a spare copy reader if you like it.
Okay.
Yep.
Of the title examination.
It's a, we, I.
I have the legal opinion.
Yeah, I have his legal opinion. He has, he has his notes and his abstract notes, but I've got a legal opinion.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. Chairman.
We're looking for the, to key for us, because we've talked to Town Council about this, Mr. Chair, and it requires a title exam. There may be merit to their legal argument. It's a two-step process. Town accepts it at a town meeting, but did they take the fee?
Their records, from what we've discerned, they never took the fee.
Okay. Well, if you've got the title exam report there, that's what we need.
This is a summary, we can, I can get you the report. Usually, that's usually, that's his work. He would do an opinion letter that he sent us.
Yeah, we'd like the complete report, just have Town Council look at it, and we may in fact agree with you, and then we can proceed, but.
Do you want a copy of this, or you want?
I have that.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Please.
What's to stop the town from taking it by eminent domain now?
Got a question for me?
Anybody. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I don't know squat about it. It just sounds kind of silly. I mean, why can't we make a taking? I mean, if it's a road, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 houses, well, it looks like 7 houses, and you're saying Pierce Ave, you're saying Pierce Ave is not owned by the town until it gets to the clearing?
Water Department.
Right.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think, taking eminent domain is a legal process, and there's all sorts of rights both ways with that, and there has to be just compensation. I think the legal question is, why couldn't we just complete the process like we did with other portions of Pierce Ave and assume title?
Okay.
At this point.
I could have. I'll answer that. Your first question, I've been doing this 30 something years.
Can you please step up to the microphone?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Doing this 30 years, not the first time I've seen this.
Okay.
It happens very frequently. It happened in Petersham, happened in Templeton. It happens more often than you think. I don't know if I spoke to you, no, sorry. Your predecessor.
I'm surprised it happens a lot.
It happens a lot. And the only thing attorney Pellegrini found was down towards, I believe it was Florence Street, there's an old 1911 Taking Your Book 262, page 49. That's the only taking he found from Pierce Ave. So I'll gladly get the complete abstract. Usually, when an attorney gives an opinion letter, you know, that's what you rely on as far as, it's up to you. If you want, if you want the whole thing, we'll get you this whole thing.
Appreciate that. Just have Town Council look at it, and then, so we're all on the same page.
Talking to Town Council now, as we start this process, like, no problem.
That's what he identified as the need in this process now to resolve that.
Sure.
Put it to bed, so.
No problem. It's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
Great.
You understand my concern, right? I mean, if there's 6 house addresses on a road that's not technically owned by the town, then they're not legally, they're not illegal houses.
It's a, it's two, I'm sorry. You've got 2 different issues.
So if you're going, we do, just for the sake of the recording?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, if you're going to speak, I do need you at the microphone. That's all.
I just want to get my back to people.
Yeah, in this case.
Sure.
It's just what the setup requires.
So there's, there's 2 issues. The first issue is, we can't find anything in the registry that says you took this portion, okay? The second issue is, the town, according to your records, has accepted this street, right? So, you know, it's a little bit of a legal conundrum, which can probably be resolved one way or the other. I just have to identify this, because this helps us in relation to having our parking all in one lot to comply with your bylaw.
So the parking for Il Forno?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what this, this parking is for, Il Forno.
So it sounds like you're going to?
I'll, I'll hold off. Thank you.
All right. So for the, so I'm going to just address to the people watching at home, the townspeople here as well, to say, you're going to hear me ask some questions about the process, how the town should, I am really bad at legal speak, so we're going to just pretend I'm good at it and waive it, and it'll have to be okay. However, the town was, in theory, supposed to do this, that the applicant says we did not, I'm going to ask some questions about that process. When I do things like that, sometimes concerns get brought up, saying, hey, why are you taking the applicant's attorney's word on it? And the answer is, I'm asking the applicant's attorneys to speak, because they're the attorney who's present. Town Council, as you've heard, is involved in this. So I don't want the townspeople to think at any point that, while I'm asking you questions, that that's going to be, oh, sure. No, that's why lawyers exist, to have, to educate us, we can make decisions, but then our lawyer's going to check, verify, come back, and have those legal discussions as appropriate. Could you please walk us through the process by which the town should have taken Pierce Ave? Well, I, taken, I guess, as a techni, could you please walk us through the process by which the town would have taken Pierce Ave, and where you are claiming the town did not get Pierce Ave?
So there's, there's 2 ways that a town can end up with a road or a street. The first is by a deed, and you'll see this a lot of times when you do a subdivision. The developer will retain the fee interest in the road, he'll build out the project, right? And then at the end of the project, he'll ask that the town accept a deed, and he'll take the deed, right? The other method is eminent domain or a taking, where the town actually does a petition, and they take the road, and they do a layout, and then it goes to a town meeting, gets voted on, and then they take all of that, and they record the registry of deeds with a layout, and that's your taking. There's no deeds from anybody in the chain of title for Pierce Ave to the town of Lunenburg that we can find. There's votes at the Town Hall about taking different sections of Pierce Ave, but those are never solidified or recorded at the registry of deeds that we can find. So those, so answer your question, Mr. Chairman, those are the 2 ways. Either you get a deed, or you do a take.
And if I could super simplify your argument, just for the sake of understanding for most people. Your argument is, the town voted and said, we're going to grab it, and then never actually grabbed it.
That's what, that's what we've determined.
Okay. Great.
And again, it's not, I've seen this, you know, a couple of times.
Yeah. I just want, I want to make sure that we're all, in my experience, when we start to get into this, it can be tricky, and we start, we on the board, or townspeople, or y'all who are more versed in this in a technical sense, can start talking past each other, and I want to try to avoid that in this.
Absolutely.
Because it's confusing. Okay.
I could put it differently. The legislative body decided that they wanted to do something, and the executive dropped the ball?
I, I, I think that sounds potentially feasible. I don't know the exact process and how we're, how some of that gets divided, but I hear what you're saying. I mean, I'll also be the first to say, as I'm sitting here, being neutral on an emotional level, it feels real weird that we've kind of owned a road for our 100 years but don't. But I guess that's why lawyers exist, too, to clarify that. I'd look for, again, comment or questions from the board on any aspect of this before I turn out for public comment.
I would, I would mention that the ownership of Pierce Ave has, while it does come up in the discussion of the site plan approval and the stormwater management, it's really in the hands of Town Council. So I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we don't get too deep in the weeds on that, but that's just my 2 cents.
Fair enough. That's fair.
That's just my 2 cents.
Nope, that's fair.
I'm not the chair.
No, I hear, I hear you on that. I want to make sure we have a thorough understanding, because we, at some point, we make decisions to act, and I want to, and that, I don't think, for a second, think that will be tonight, there's too many other moving parts. But I want to make sure that we are going into that as educated on all aspects as possible in case there is uncertainty or wiggle room, and we have to make a call at some point. Sounds like a lot of this may be decided, or others may come to an understanding and inform us of what the legal situation is. I agree with that. Thoughts or comments or questions from the board?
Just to continue with the simplifying and making sure I'm understanding everything. Essentially, what we're looking at here is the claim is that this is now between Il Forno and the 6-acre parcel is one, being treated as one parcel with a private road going through it.
Correct. I, I would call it a private road. It's a, it's a road. I think we have to figure out exactly what the, what we're going to call it. But just, you know, DNA Lunenburg owns both sides. So under the derelict fee statute, it merges in the middle, and it's one lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, question of the applicant regarding their presentation. The request for relief on the setbacks. Speaking of the building commissioner, we have, yeah, please. We haven't been able to identify where the planning board has the authority to waive that. That's usually a variance that comes from the ZBA. It's a dimensional control, so we're having trouble in the regulations identifying where the planning board can do that.
Okay.
I will review that and get back to you.
Thank you.
On that avenue.
It looks like for now, those of us up here are done with initial questions. I'm guessing, do you have anything else to present to us at this moment?
Not at this moment. Like I said before, you know, we're waiting peer review for the stormwater design and other aspects, and we have a couple of comments from department heads, as well as your planner. So we're just here right now to gather information, so that we can address them appropriately.
Great. In that case, I will turn to the public and see if you have questions. If you do, I'm going to ask you to, so what you're going to do is, you're going to come up. If that is difficult for you, we can turn to our friends in the TV booth and get a mobile microphone app. So if you're someone who getting up is going to be a challenge, just give me a thumbs up when it's time, and I'll make sure we get a microphone out to you. Otherwise, I would ask you to come up. When you come up, you're going to say your name and your address for the record, and then you'll ask your questions. It looks like this is a really chilled group, looking to understand, but I will remind us that we're here to be civil, and that's the expectation. I don't think that's going to be a problem tonight, but I like to throw that out when there's this many people in the room. Great, but I think we have people that are interested in come. You first, please.
Michael Lovewell, 579 Reservoir Road, also the owner of 480 Electric Avenue and 15 Kirby Avenue. And I think I'm here, maybe not for the, we, when I got the notice, it was for the 494 property. And I'm here to concern some frustrations that we've had with our, the applicant, about some drainage issues and some noise concerns. And I've been to the building department in the building, and he had said that anytime there's a meeting, please come and voice your concerns, that's the only way you're going to get heard. So I have the tenants from 15, but I don't know if that's really why we're here tonight. I think this is here for the property, which I thought was 500 Electric Avenue. It used to always be 500 Electric Avenue, but maybe it isn't anymore. But, so I'm just here for some frustrations that, it's been over a year that the applicant and our neighbor has, he just refuses to do some things for us, and won't, won't hear the neighbors. And there's noise concerns at the new building that was built next to the current restaurant. So I think I'm actually here not for the right timing.
Okay. So what, I will explain, there's a couple of components here. For site plan review, we are limit, as you're gathering, we are somewhat limited in scope in that we are looking at very concrete, specific requirements that eventually lead to our approval or denial, or whatever the technical term is, on the application. It is public comment. You are welcome to speak. I'm not really in the business of silencing people.
I understand.
But by the, but now, do we have, I have to, is this stormwater as well?
Yes.
Okay. So drainage issues would definitely be something worth speaking to, because that is with a stormwater plan, that could very potentially come into play.
Okay.
If you wish to share any other concerns, you are welcome to. I can't tell you how much of that will directly factor in, but you have the microphone right now.
So it's basically, when that building was first proposed, there was never any gutters on that building. And then at the end of the build, gutters appeared on the property.
When we say "the" building, you mean?
The new, the addition. And they directly pour into 15, the rear of 15 Kirby Avenue, and we have videos, I showed the building inspector, of water just funneling through the wall and flooding that property. And the tenants are here, too, and they can verify this. And the, and I've asked Mr. Mohammed a couple of times, you know, you need to take care of this, and it's never been taken care of. So I thought tonight, this would be an opportunity to maybe say something where I could maybe get something done. And then we have a noise concern over there with, you know, he's got live entertainment in there now, and, you know, the neighbors, they have concerns with, with the noise. It's so close. You know, the problem there is, it's a commercial property, and believe me, I have the car business there. And when I came in front of these boards 40 years ago, the biggest concern was, be courteous to your neighbors. And that is one thing that my brother and I, we really do. And you can see, there's a lot of people from that little area out back here in Whalem. It's a tight-knit little area, and, you know, you've got to be, you know, very cautious with, you know, the business that you do with your neighbors, because they live there. We go home at night, they live, you know, they live there. So we have concerns about, you know, the noise and, and things like that. So that's, that's why we're here.
Okay. Being realistic, I'm not certain that noise will be able to factor in here.
I don't think so.
Yeah. But I, I think what you're coming also before us is telling you, is what you're doing is coming before us, and also telling us that you're having issues with stormwater runoff directly onto property that you own.
Correct.
Great. Then that is good to know, and you've given the addresses and everything, so we have that on the record as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. If I may. I know there were other, yes, please.
George Oliver, 33 Wallace Park. I just had to get my mind wrapped around the big picture, because apparently, there's 2 plots, and one is for a building, and the other is a parking lot. And I have looked at some of the maps, and I stopped by and thumbed through the pile, and I just wanted to make sure that I am clear. One's got a building, and the other is 80-something parking spaces, and there's a buffer, they shall not ever meet. There's no way you can drive through. Is that correct, as far as I can see on the map?
I would turn to the.
From the building to the 80 parking spaces, you cannot get there. You have to walk.
I will ask you to speak while at the microphone, I, just because then people at home in the recording don't have you, if you're not at the microphone.
Okay. So, so that being the case, there's 88 parking spaces, basically, being in a, we'd be worried about light pollution, what type of Cobra lamps are you putting up, buffer, and is there a covenant in place that prevents egress a second? Or is it just that one spot on Pierce Ave? I have no clue. And the statement is that it was undeveloped and kind of really, it was, basically, it's been used for 15-something years from all the neighborhood. I mean, they could actually put a claim on it, if you think about it, because even though it's undeveloped, constant use, and that back, and as, I just was worried about the buffer, defined buffer, and there's no traffic. City of Leamester, are they involved? They did with the condos, they have cut back on one entrance, but nothing could return back. So I find this interesting, how they have a U, and Leamester may say, have, have something about it. How, how is that going to pan out? And once I- And once again, egress on the side streets for 88 parking is kind of alarming, and there's only one entrance. Hopefully, it stays one entrance, but then why would you need 88 spaces? And, uh, I'm just worried, defined buffer, two feet and, you know, there's massive trees there. It's a wall, it's, it's, and it keeps the, the noise and the light down. Right now, it looks like Wrigley Field with, with the restaurant parking lights in the wrong direction. They do have some, some dampeners on it, but they're all, you could see it, you know, quarter mile away. And it's had blinds that cause when you come up the street. I can't imagine with 88 parking, I was just looking at just one. I don't know how, uh, the bylaws deal with lights at this point. And that's all I have. I just-
Great.
Not just define, basically define the, the buffer. Are we almost guaranteed there won't be more egress in the, in the parking? And then is, uh, where's the traffic study? Now, that's all I have.
Great. And I'm going to invite the applicant to answer some, some of those questions. What I do want to point out is anything on the topic of a claim that others might have a right to that land is not the domain of this board. That is other legal proceedings that individuals could choose or not to do that I don't understand, but that isn't our domain here. So that isn't something I can, we can really address, but.
Okay. Uh, so that, there was a couple items on that one, and so I'm going to just, I know I kind of glanced over the parking configuration a little bit too much, and I apologize to the board for that and the public. So let me just kind of do an overview of the parking layout. So because of derelict fee, everything is one giant lot. So as we're showing right now, we're maintaining the traveled path along Pierce Ave. So there is continued access through that. We're reconfiguring the parking at the 494 property to become zoning compliant. Part of that is incorporating ADA parking spaces immediately in front of the building to meet those requirements. So we are providing the required ADA parking based on the total number of parking spaces allocated to that building use, if you will. All right? So those are immediately along the frontage of the building. That's where all ADA will occur. From there, the surplus parking necessary for the business is located along, for lack of a better term, the opposite side of Pierce Ave. We have a loop configuration, so there's only one means of egress onto the Pierce Ave from the parking lot area. What is shown is what's proposed. We're not expecting to expand upon that. Obviously, if we do, we have to come before this board and various other boards in order to get that to work, if you will. So there's one means of egress, which we have located closer to the intersection with Electric Ave to get, get the majority of this commercial traffic component away from the residential inclined properties. So that's one of the reasons why we've done that. I can say, based on the design, it would be very difficult to get another access point along Pierce Ave only because of the topography change that has to occur from the parking lot to make stormwater management work, for lack of a better term. The parking on the opposite side of Pierce Ave will utilize a new concrete sidewalk that will run, run along the perimeter of the parking, along Electric Ave side. This will then lead to a crosswalk at Pierce Ave so that patrons can come from that parking lot at a designated location, so there's no meandering of pedestrians in the roadway system. It's in one defined location, and that would go from the parking lot through a painted crosswalk to the actual business use itself. So that's the parking configuration. I think there was concern about light spill. We did provide a photometric analysis as part of our submittal package, showing that there's, we're containing the lighting within our development. We're not doing any additional light shine beyond the limits of work. So that was provided for review by the board. I don't unfortunately have a copy of, you know, rendering of that with me tonight. If the board has concerns about that, I can provide it, but we did provide that as part of our submission package.
And that's what we already have, that was all part of the application, and so that's also a matter of public record that anyone else can go in, get those documents and look at the, when we say photometric analysis, that's effectively the plan for where the light's going to shine, if I could.
And I'll, it's effectively like that. It's just shows the intensity of the lighting levels on the property. I will say that we've done nice guy compliant lighting as required by most municipalities, so we are providing compliance with that. And we're maintaining a lower level light just because of the residentially inclined area. It's not a, going to be a shopping plaza light up the entire world level, but there is enough to maintain safe pedestrian movement within the parking lot during nighttime hours.
Thank you very much for that. And, um, well, I also appreciate that, that, that explains to me why, because I looked at it, and I'm like, oh, it's kind of interesting. There's that, that kind of hook out from the big parking lot to go to Pierce Ave. Why was that? Now I hear you explain, because that kind of keeps the traffic as far away from the residential parts of the, of that road as feasible. Do I understand that correctly? All right. And, um, and so when you talked about, just to paraphrase again, all the, all the ADA parking, what a lot of us would commonly call the handicap spaces in normal, in like everyday parlance, are all near the building on that side of the road as required, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Great. Okay. I will turn to the public again and see if there's other public comment. Please.
My name is Janine Cooper. I live at 43 The Clearing. I bought my house in 92, and at that point, there was no flooding at the end of Clearing Street and Lejeune and Pierce. Since they disturbed that parking lot, at this point, any kind of rain, that basin floods. Lejeune is a, a river, and every time they disturb that earth, and, I mean, it is a, for three days after every rain, it is raining, it, it is a complete river. So I'm very concerned about them and what they're doing in that parking lot and what they propose. So I'd like to, how are they going to make sure that this doesn't get worse?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Please.
At this point to the public through the, you to the, the folks here? We want you to know, or I want you to know that regardless of whether or not you're here and involved in the public hearing, there are town guidelines, design standards, and stormwater standards that we apply, that we require. And we're going through that process. We have a peer review consultant. He reviews all the plans, and we're going to make sure that all the plans meet all, A, the zoning bylaws, B, the will of the town. The zoning bylaws that the town meeting passed to protect you, and that the planning board is the authority to watch over. So we're going to be going through that process, but your input is important and you have a say. And so if there's particular things that you want to see in the way of buffer, or fence, or anything like that, I'll, I'll just tell you, somebody in this job for 30 years, vegetation doesn't do it. Vegetation doesn't stop noise. Noise is a line of sight impact, so you need a solid surface, a wall or a fence. So if there are those kind of things that are impacting you right now, this is the opportunity to improve this situation, and they are going to invest in the property and improve it. So please, by all means, if there are things you think because you're living there and you see it, and you know your neighborhood better than anyone, the planning board wants to know that and, and they want to consider that in terms of what gets required when this is approved. So just want to put that out there to the folks in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to speak on stormwater, like I said, we are complying with the local regulation as well as the state regulation. It's going through peer review. Just so the public is aware, because this is a, if you're not familiar with the term, the terminology of stormwater, it can be kind of confusing. So just, I want to give the public just a brief overview of what we do. So what we do is we look at pre-development conditions of the land, land cover types, soil types, all that kind of fun stuff, and apply that to figure out flow rates and volumes and stuff like that. Under the current regulations, we're required to provide mitigation of that so that we do not exceed the pre-existing condition. So currently, everything flows towards the wetland that's located on the westerly portion of the site before it enters into the municipal drainage system. As part of this, our stormwater design and improvements, we're utilizing two detention facilities in order to detain and effectively retard the flow rates coming from the property so that they're at or below the existing rates. The stormwater bylaw within this town has an additional level of protection where you have to retain one inch per square foot of the impervious area, which is being provided via an infiltration basin closer to the bottom of the site. So what we do is we treat, capture, retain a portion of it, and allow it to discharge at a slower rate than what's currently going there now. So pre-existing condition unfortunately is a pre-existing condition, but the development that we're intending is to mitigate our immediate impacts from that area.
Put another, I want to make sure that, this might be a less friendly way of stating it, but put another way, the water flow now is the water flow now. You are, you are required to fix the problems that would be created by the development, but not what's going on now?
Correct. So as part of our pre-analysis, we looked at it as it is today. So we do acknowledge there has been some clearing along the frontage. It's now been converted from a new growth woodland to a more gravel-based packed area. So we are taking into that consideration our impacts from that and mitigating that appropriately.
Could we say that one step closer to everyday English for me? Like, I, I understood every word, but I don't know that I'm fully wrapping my mind on the concept.
So we're taking a look at the cumulative impacts from this area over the years and applying that as our pre-existing condition so that our development is below that threshold.
Okay.
And that's going to be also, again, peer reviewed with the towns engineer as well, to make sure our analysis makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Please.
If I can, just really quickly.
Yes.
We don't have anything that says like, our hands are kind of tied when it comes to stormwater. Like, we, we can only mandate that it is up to original conditions. We don't have the ability to say, we want you to improve this space.
Well, this is where I pivot my head to the right and go. Yeah, I would say there's a lot of opportunity to improve the existing condition. They're in site plan review before permitting authority. So we're going to be working with them, addressing existing problems, which I'm, I'm pretty sure were not originally approved when the, the building was built in the first place. So do we want to go down the road of enforcement of whatever the pre-existing condition is? No. We want to work with the applicant to improve it for the neighborhood and address the problems. I would suspect they would want to too. So this is the opportunity to do that, and that's what we'll expect in the process.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Court. I live at 15 Kirby, tenant of Michael Lovell. So a few concerns of, in regard to the ownership of Pierce Ave, of the city or what have you. So if, from what I've understood in the past with pri, in regard to like private roads, when they're plowed in the wintertime, if it's a private road, it's up to the tenants or the folks that own the property along the road to have their road plowed, is it not?
Legally and technically, if you're-
Yeah.
Please.
Give an example. Dana Avenue, before, was considered a private road. A friend of mine used to live on it. They used to have to pay to have that road plowed.
What happens is, in responsible towns is, it's a private road, so the legal responsibility is the private property owners on that private road. However, because they say we pay taxes to the town, the town acquiesces and they use the town's equipment on that road to maintain it as though it were an accepted public way. That's what happens. But the town does not have a legal obligation to do that.
Okay. And so that's basically what's happening with Pierce Ave?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the town believed that it was accepted properly.
Right.
That now is disputed.
Yeah. Um, the other concern is too, that, I don't know who the contractors were that put up the additional building at Il Forno, but if it's the same contractors, I definitely have concern in regard to runoff storm drainage because of, I have here a video.
Before you can show, now, for him to show us a video, it would also have to be submitted into the public record, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the, I just want to make sure, again, crossing our Ts, dotting our Is. Is that something he can then forward by email, or how does that get?
Yes, he could, he could forward that to-
Okay. So you can show us a video, but it has to also be sent for, because we're discussing it as part of a public hearing, that file has to then be available as part of the public record.
Okay. No, not a problem. Honey, can you help me find this one again? I lost it.
It's fine.
Sorry. She's a lot more technical than I am.
Yep. Understood.
Are you getting that up? Is this something you've brought to the attention of town officials before, building commissioner? Has it been documented in any way?
Yeah. Yeah, it was, um, and it wasn't the first time we dealt with this, so.
If I may?
Yeah.
I might suggest, excuse me, since they certainly, they've already expressed they're not looking for an approval tonight. This was going to continue, so this-
Yeah, that's fair. So-
I've got a copy of that.
Yeah, so-
I do apologize.
Nope. So what you can do is, don't stress it. We're not, and Mr. Allison raised an excellent point. We're not approving anything tonight. We're still, you're here to speak, the applicant's here to speak, they're here to listen, we're here to listen, to ask questions. This is not an instantaneous process. So what I think we'll ask is if you could, because also that way we can see it correctly, if you could take that file, send it to the land use director.
Okay.
And then we can watch it, and it may speak for itself. You may also come to another meeting, or even just call in by Zoom, or send an email explaining it. Then we have, as the, as the record, we have the ability to view on our machines and get a better view of what you're discussing, so we can go in more fully equipped. And then the applicant will have it as well because it's all public record.
Got you.
Is that amenable for you?
That is amenable. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And again, as we're talking about Pierce Ave, I just, again, want to be clear, this is largely something for the lawyers to hash out as everyone reviews everything. It doesn't mean you shouldn't speak on it. By all means, you are welcome to, but you're not going to see, that part of the decision making is very likely out of our hands as a board. I'm not saying don't speak to it. I just, again, I want to set expectations. Please.
My name is Linda Halcy. I actually live on Pierce Ave, at 20 Pierce Ave. My concerns are what kind of wall is going to be built? Because like I said, I'm right across from the parking lot. I don't want any kind of cheap scotch, stockade or anything like that, so I'm hoping something is going to be built well. My other concerns, and everybody's been talking about it, it's a very high water level. I want to make sure that whatever they do for that water, they, they understand because my sump pump runs all winter long. It's very high water level, so I want to make sure those concerns, that's one of my major concerns. I don't need more water coming in my house. Right now, I know he talked about the lights that are going into the parking lot, but right now, those lights come right into my house. I don't put shades on the front windows. I have six windows in front. I'm not going to start closing those every night and put them up every morning. I don't care who can see in, but those lights are beaming. They've got to put some kind of cover. There's got to be some kind of, something that they can do right now with these bright lights. It, it's just awful. And also, right across the street from my house is my water shut off to my house. So if they start clearing out some of those trees and everything, I want to make sure that they understand that when they survey, because Lunenburg doesn't own it, but I get my water from Leominster, so that is coming through Leominster. I want to make sure that they know that my water shut off is there. I don't need that damaged. And, um, and that's it. But the main concern is the high level water and what kind- But the main concern is the high level water and what kind of wa- wall is going to be built, because I don't want anything cheesy, I don't want to look out my front window. And right now, I wish they would do something with both the lights.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to give the applicant a chance to both respond to some of the questions as well as anything else. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you.
So relative stormwater issues are noted from previous comment. We'll review the lighting issues, and relative to the fence type along the parking lot, that's going to be a solid wall vinyl fence. So it's not going to be a stockade, it's going to be a vinyl, it's a little bit higher quality than we would believe a stockade would be, but we are at the discretion of the board. But, that being said, that's it.
Great. Thank you.
Michael Cooper, 43 The Clearing Street. El Forno's does a fantastic business. They're crowded every day that they're open, must be, it's good stuff. We eat there too. It's not a concern about that. Our concerns are, like everyone else has already said, the water. The amount of water that we have right now is just ridiculous. If the town isn't fixing that, how are they going to let somebody else come in and just do their, and not add to ours? I get that, but it's gonna, it has to, there's no way around it. Our culverts take a day, two days to empty out. They fill up within the first hour or two, they're not even working. Some of them are broken. So as far as the town allowing somebody else to put new drainage and stuff, maybe we should fix what we have, so we don't have that problem. And then their ability to do their job won't affect us, but there's no way anything can happen there and not affect us. It just, it can't. It doesn't matter how big of a container you put, it's going to flow over into our properties. And the reason I bring that up is when Whalen was taken down and the condos were put up, that's when our flooding started. All that water that we have comes from over there, and it just washes right down to our one little area. Everybody in the neighborhood used to have dry basins. We do not now. No one.
I'm not doub- I'm not doubting that. I'm just trying to process, because in my mind, that's, the side opposite the condos, where we're talking about, is uphill.
Mm-hmm. The condos are on a hill.
From the condos. Is that right? Or the condos higher?
The condos are higher than us.
Okay. Great. All right.
So all that water comes down, and, you know, it just makes its way across. The area that they're going to redevelop is great, as long as the water doesn't come to us. So that is my biggest concern. My second concern would be the traffic coming in on Pierce Ave. That is a very small road to begin with. It's already packed with the traffic that comes from everybody trying to skirt the light. We've tried stop signs and stuff, we've been working with the DPW a little bit, and they put up a couple of new stop signs. But the amount of traffic coming in on Pierce Ave, it would be, make more sense for us that if people were jumping off of Electric Ave and pulling into the parking lot and then walking over to the store, I mean, to the restaurant. It's just too much. Pierce Ave is not big enough to handle that amount of traffic. And, you know, I don't know what the exact business is, but I would say it's at least 100 cars a night that come and go there. That's a lot, especially when you live in a little neighborhood like ours, it's very, very tight. And the last one would be the lighting again. Currently, the lighting that's coming off the back of the building lights up the entire street. I don't know how the neighbors handle it. It's extremely bright. And I know that's not what the proposal's about, but it needs to, you know, it's part of going forward, it needs to be fixed. So those are our big concerns. As you can see, it's the water. And we're already, hence the pun, we're underwater. All right? It's ridiculous, and to add to that, it's just not going to be better. And I can't imagine if he's, if their job is to only make it so it doesn't add more to ours, or, you know, except, something's going to be fixed on the backside. It can't be, because it's already low standard. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. It's, the standard there's already too low, so their standard's going to be low. That's not going to work for us. So, that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant wants to talk to any points there, there was a, I am curious why, because they raised the point, why is the entrance for the new parking lot on Pierce Ave instead of on Electric? I mean, that's clearly a conscious choice. I'm curious what it is.
It was primarily just to get the traffic off of Electric Ave, because it is indeed a very busy road. I drive it on a regular basis, and we're just trying to get that turning maneuvers off of Electric Ave as much as humanly possible. With that being said, we can reevaluate, but our initial interpretation is that it's a safer option to go off of Pierce Ave where everything gets concentrated already than to introduce another opening so close to Pierce Ave itself.
So I have a question. I hear a lot of concern about increased traffic. I've made some assumptions here, but I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. There's no, is there any change happening that would... My understanding of this is this big parking lot should be effectively absorbing a lot of the on-street parking and everything else that happens now.
Correct.
Is there something happening that would cause the overall traffic flow to the business to potentially increase? Now, I know there's also the separate building on the other part of the lot, we haven't really talked about that. Is there something happening here that I don't fully understand that would potentially be causing an increase in overall traffic volume to the restaurant?
No. At this point in time, it's the intent to remain, or maintain the current seating level in the structure. The project is precipitated from the fact that the parking doesn't work, and that we have traffic issues, on-street parking, general mishap of parking in that area. That's what's precipitating this proposal.
Great.
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Please.
I mean, we did the permit for the, that modular building, excuse me, it was a COVID relief kind of a thing, like, kind of like the second floor on that lakefront building. We required them to maintain their pre-existing capacity. Now that COVID's passed, it's no longer an outdoor building, I can foresee that, yeah, as the applicant's engineer says, there's no current plan, but as soon as they get approval on this one, they've got 80-something spots, and they've got an existing 40-something spots that meet the current requirement. And that was part of the reason that we couldn't allow them to expand without keeping their current capacity for the building. So now that they're going to double their parking spaces, they're, I mean, you'd be a moron not to believe that they intend to come back and ask for relief on that previous permit. Nothing against you, of course, but, you know, it's just kind of common sense.
So I'm trying, I'm thinking through, and I know, because I was also on the board, when that, when that, the permit came in, because there was an outdoor tent dining, and this building was built effectively because it was going to mirror the use that was already happening on the property. I'm trying to remember, because by then I think we had the new parking guidelines, I'm trying to think of, that seems like something we would have checked, I'm trying to figure out why, like, what the steps were. I don't remember if you were doing that project or not. Okay.
That was me.
Please.
So, again, this is many, many years ago, so I apologize for the fuzziness, but originally there was a tent structure there, part of the COVID dining issues that we all experienced back then. The purpose of the additional structure was to create a much more permanent vigor while maintaining the existing seat count. The idea being that with the additional area for seating, the space, the tables and everything like that can be spaced out more appropriately. But the parking configuration remained intact, everything remained intact, minus the exception that we put a building up.
Is that what, is that what it was, was effectively, the tent was expand, was de-, was not an increase in seating, but a decrowding of the seating?
For lack of a better term, yes.
Okay. All right. So that would be why we could approve it, because it wasn't an increase in seating. But I think you raise a point as well, with, enough, so this, the new lot, how roughly, how many spaces is that adding beyond what is needed for the restaurant to be up to current parking guidelines? I'll take back on the napkin math on that one, I'm just trying to get a...
I think there's 40. I think there's existing 45 spaces from recollection, and I think that might have been two more than they really absolutely needed.
Well, see, I feel like they came in saying that the park, number of parking was not sufficient by current standards, but that was pre-existing non-conforming.
Plus, it was COVID relief, and it was a tent. And then we put up a Morton building and we...
Well, they didn't increase seating with the tent, though, they just...
Exactly. So the capacity didn't change.
Yeah.
Correct. The pre-existing non-conforming condition was relative to geometry. So a lot of the parking spaces on a busy night would become effectively very difficult to get into, and people don't feel comfortable parking their cars like that. That's where the non-conforming component of it comes into play. And I just found, and I'll circle back to the parking requirements, based on the total permitted seating of 134 with a 15 employee max shift, you're looking at a total parking requirement of 60 spaces, as shown, we're at 119. I'm dedicated to that in order to accommodate the influx that we see on larger events.
Okay. All right. Fair. So Mr. Allison, I think you raised a good point of the potential...
Unintended consequences.
Yeah.
Previous member loved to say that.
It's worth us, I don't know if that's something we fully can judge on, but I think it's worth being aware as we're building what that could mean. All right. Great. Thank you.
Could I make a little tangential town advertisement about stormwater?
Yeah.
This isn't for you, this is just for people in general. Everybody talking about stormwater, sometime in the next six months, what you might see in the town is advertisements for what we're calling a stormwater utility, same as you've got electrical utility, sewer, water. The town is looking to create a stormwater utility so that we have a dedicated force who, instead of just having our Town Depot occasionally do stormwater stuff when they can, will have a dedicated force whose job every day is improving and expanding and maintaining our stormwater task force. So keep an eye out, in about six months, we'll start advertising it. Sometime next year, we'll be looking to vote on it and hopefully improve the town a bit. So, important for people who are looking at stormwater problems.
For those who don't follow planning board, or capital planning for that matter, because it takes up a lot of capital planning too, a surprising amount of this role, of this volunteer job, is taking water that's supposed to be in the ground and isn't, and get it, and help make sure it gets into the ground. And that's an increasing concern with environmental changes and everything else. I always like to sort, cite the meeting that we had here where I had to pause as chair to go make sure my car was not floating away in the lower lot, because that would have been awkward. When we were, that was the storm that washed out Lemonster. No. So what I'm, and I'm not looking to cut off public comment, because I want to make sure your voices are heard and recorded and are on the record. We're hearing a lot of concerns about water. Thank you. I believe that will be an absolute focus for us. We hear concerns about noise, and we hear concerns about the existing lighting and how the new lighting will function as well. I'm not saying you can't speak to those, but those are the, what I'm hearing as the three big points so far. If there's other public comment, we welcome it. Please.
May I want to mention the raise hand feature, because it looks like there's a good number of people.
Oh, yes. Thank you. As well for our friends at home, if you do want to make a public comment, do use that raise hand feature. Mr. O'Connell is watching Zoom, and will know if you raise your hand, and we'll make sure we get you in the queue to speak.
My name's Kathy Oliver, and I live in 33 Wallace Park. And my concern, it was already mentioned, it was about the traffic. The traffic, my street's little, and the traffic comes down that street and cuts through my street all day long. It's absolutely ridiculous. There's times I can't even pull out of my driveway. And it's almost like, should some of these streets be one-way? I mean, if they're going to have all this traffic come down Pierce Street, where are they all going to go? They're not going to go all the way down to the end, they're going to take the first two streets they can. That's my concern.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you.
Terry Green, 28 The Clearing Street. Mine's about the parking and the traffic as well into the neighborhood. On a really good night, where the restaurant sits currently, a lot of the patrons don't go straight onto 13, they cut across Pierce to go onto 13. So if I'm coming home at night trying to pull down to Pierce to get to my road, I've almost been T-boned. I get the finger a lot, because they feel it's part of their parking lot is Pierce Ave. So now you're talking about another egress from the bigger parking lot onto Pierce Ave to put more traffic on there? I just feel it's an accident waiting to happen. A lot of accidents waiting to happen. I would rather see them, even with their current parking lot, shut off their access to Pierce Ave, because there's just too much coming across. Now, say, I mean, I have a grandson who's 14 who goes to the basketball courts, if he goes around that way, if there's too many cars coming in so many directions, I feel someone's going to get hit. So that's my big concern. I mean, the water that we've talked about is also a concern, because my sump pumps run 24/7. I also, where I live, behind the baseball field, they put that other apartment complex, so now we get more water from there. So there's a lot of water in that area. But no one's really talked about that traffic pattern, that I think everything should go onto 13. It can't come into our neighborhood, because if you think, my street is called the clearing for a reason, because you can't pass two cars going in opposite directions, so you add more traffic on there, it's going to be a disaster. That's my two cents.
All right. Thank you. And I do want to know, I said there were three things, yeah, no, traffic is hurt as well, very much so. I, I had initially put that lower in my own mind, because I was trying to understand how the increase, but I hear the concerns, and I think the board does. Please.
Mike Lovell, 579 Reservoir Road. Is this property in the Whalen Overlay District?
I'd like also to ask if this wasn't part of the required area for the 241 units at Whalen? I thought that there was something to do with that in this parcel.
It was. You're correct. You're correct.
I thought so.
But, so when they did the overlay district back in the time, I'm really surprised that they overlooked that Pierce Ave taking at that time, because they would be, some serious, you know, work was done to do that. The other question I have is, are you reconfiguring the current lot at 494 Electric Ave? For the engineer, question?
I do need to speak to the microphone, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So it is within the Whalen Overlay District. We're not utilizing any of the overlay components. And relative to the 494 parcel, we are reconfiguring the parking layout, removing areas of pavement. As many of the, you know, public members have mentioned, that that area is, doesn't have a controlled traffic flow at all. Like, straight out, no, there's no traffic control. By us reconfiguring the parking on 494, what we're doing is we're restricting the parking to be, or the access points along the roadway systems into defined locations, so that people can perform their appropriate turning maneuvers in and out of the site. On the 494, we are reconfiguring that parking, and by default, we're restricting the access points, so that currently there's a broad-open curb cut, if you will, so anybody can go anywhere they want. With this design, we're restricting that to one point along Electric Ave and one along Pierce Ave, and turning that existing pavement area into green space for additional landscaping, so.
So my concern to that is, actually, for the 480 Electric property, we had to, when we first blacktopped, we had to blacktop the front part of it and put a squail in there to alleviate the water runoff from... to alleviate the water runoff from 494, so it would go across the front and down into a drain. I don't see any, I don't see any drainage or anything. I'm sure you must have drainage calculations for that lot. And I don't see any snow storage?
So the snow storage is shown on the plan around the landscaping areas. It's primarily located in the front landscaping island that I just told you about that we're converting from pavement to that. We're installing curbing along the limits of work in order to redirect the runoff around the property and into the gutter line of Electric Ave. We did do stormwater analysis and the gutter flow within Electric Ave is a design point, one of the points, various points we evaluated as part of our analysis. And we show, because we're reducing the amount of pavement on the property, we're showing a reduction in rates of flow to that gutter flow.
Thank you.
And for those who aren't sitting here all the time, water can't soak through pavement, I mean, under normal circumstances. Yeah. Runs, runoff on pavement, it can infiltrate, get into the ground through soil based on a myriad of factors. But when they, you'll hear that a lot at planning board meetings, talking about how much pavement or how much impervious there is. To get, basically, because that can be an issue for water getting into the ground where we want it, not on top of the ground or, you know, in our driveways or wherever. All right. Other public comment?
Hi. My name is David Zimnick, 39 Wallace Park, which is basically on the Pier Street corner. Also have a driveway that is connected, that's on Pier Street, the way the lots, anyways, same as my neighbors, a lot of water, especially in basements. And where, like the proposed parking lot now, the water currently crosses Pierce and down the driveway between houses and, you know. So is there any plan for maybe more storm basins or catch basins on Pierce? Depending who owns it. And by other, couple of questions on the map. Can the planner kind of point out, you mentioned there is wetlands and a proposed area for possible future housing development? Like where is the housing part of that? And as far as the stormwater goes, where are the catch basins you've talked about? And, you know, is there, how is the parking lot for the larger parking lot? Where's the, do you know where the flow of water, is it being graded towards Electric Avenue and out or towards Pierce Avenue and out? Thank you.
Thank you.
So relative to the layout of the, the stormwater components, if you will, all the impervious that's associated with the parking lot areas that we're developing are being captured. 494 currently overland flows, as I stated earlier, we're reducing the impervious, which offsets that, the reconfiguration. The stormwater within the development is being captured by several deep sum catch basins that are spread throughout the property or without, throughout the development in the parking lot area to capture the runoff. That directs all the runoff into a detention basin, which then discharges to an existing swale where the old railroad bed used to be. And that directs itself towards the wetland, towards the bottom portion of the site. Before that, it gets, and then it gets into the municipal system within the Pear Ave infrastructure, if you will. So again, that's all part of the review as, with the peer reviewer to make sure that what we're proposing is in the best interest of the bylaw and the acts. So we look forward to their comment. We have noted various, that all the concerns of the butter is relative to stormwater, so that is, you know, very front forward in our minds at this point in time. So I think at that point, you know, we can address that with the peer reviewer to make sure that we're doing the right thing and not trying to circumvent any kind of bylaw.
Great. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Chair, if the public's satisfied and provided all their input, at this point the board may want to consider continuing to a date certain, so that the peer reviewer can submit their report. They are online, they have the plans. The applicants paid the fee. So they're already engaged. I will need a motion and vote to authorize that Graves Engineering for $5,000 peer review, which is the estimate of his scope to proceed. So that would be my recommendation at this point, and then we can give more information to, to know how we're going to address the public's concerns.
No, I think, I think that's completely fair. I just want to make sure that, is there any other public comment, especially if something hasn't been addressed? So before we go on, I want to say, I hear a lot of frustration out there and I see a lot of, lacking about, just being frank, y'all have the ability to be very polite while expressing your grievances. And that, that isn't common. So people aren't always as polite as they could be at public meetings or in life, so thank you for that. And I don't want you to think your politeness makes your words less impactful. No, absolutely. I think we've got a lot of info. Again, there's been a lot of public input. There are some aspects, like the legal nature of Pear Ave, that's going to be hashed out, most likely by lawyers. We'll continue this. Please stay involved. As long as you're concerned, follow, come here, chime in through Zoom, we want to hear from you. Because ideally, this can be a collaborative process that gets your needs met and the applicant's needs met in a way that can be good for the entire community there. Yeah. If, unless there's anything else from the board, do we know what date would be good to continue to?
We've only got one meeting in November and that would be the appropriate.
If that gives Graves enough time to respond.
Yeah, certainly. He's already got the plan. So just a motion and vote to authorize peer review by Graves for $5,000, just procedurally, so we get that on the books.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't believe we've ever made any kind of a vote like that before. Is that?
That, that was going to say, that's never, if that.
I would really recommend and appreciate if the board would start doing that as a practice.
No, that's, so we are generally happy to meet the land use director where you view those needs as important. That isn't something we've done before, but if you view that as important, you are a resident expert, sir.
That's a statutory, I will just say it's important, yeah.
Yeah, there we, there we go.
What I will say about that is there is, there have been applicants who have requested a waiver from that.
That's okay. They can do that.
I believe it's in our regulations that it, it's, isn't it in our regulations that it's a requirement?
Yes. They, they can request a waiver. It's required and they can request a waiver or all or some of it. So they are allowed that. And they can appeal, it's the planning board's requirement for that. But that's all statutory, so around the side of caution, I always recommend to my boards.
Okay.
Just get a quick vote on it.
Sounds good.
If it's authorized.
I'm just resisting.
We only have one peer reviewer, so.
So you notice, because we've had interim land use directors for the past year, and now we have Mr. Riley, and it is interesting to see different land use directors, different planners for the town will have different nuances in terms of exactly which they feel is important, how to handle specific things. That works. Great. So a motion for, we would be looking for?
Motion to authorize Graves Engineering a peer viewer for this application and the amount of $5,000 to start.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Again, since we have a member remote, we'll be doing the roll call vote. Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Wilsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Great.
Motion to continue to the next.
A motion to continue the public hearing to, as I grab the correct, to the, to November 25th at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
Did I get the date right, Logan?
11:25.
Yeah. Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Wilsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye from myself.
And before folks leave, the planning department's going to try and get some of these plans online on the planning webpage. So be checking there. We'll always make them available to you if you come in, but we'll try to make it more accessible, so you can review it as information comes in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your interest. All right. As I realize I.
That's better. Now I can get to the fact.
All right. So friends, as you, as you clear out, I will ask you to save your conversations for the downstairs of Town Hall, just because we do have other business and other people we have to get through this evening. Next up will be 791 Lemonster Road for stormwater management permit, but we're going to give a moment for everyone to move on up. So at this time, we are going to be continuing the meeting. So if you're having a conversation, I'll just ask it to move downstairs. Downstairs. There we go. I sound like my 11-year-old. There we go. I just like it when people come to meetings. That, that makes me happy. It means the public's engaged. It means people care. And Ms. Reed, we have, now, 791 and 795 are separate public hearings, or are they?
My understanding when I received these was that they are three discrete applications, because they are three separate lots. I'm going to be honest, if that is not the standard procedure, and it could have been one to encompass all of them, that's just not something I would know, because there hasn't been documentation on that. Yeah.
Fair. Do we, are these all, is this one project? Is this?
We filed three separate applications, one for each lot.
Great. So I believe we have to handle them separately.
Yeah, there's, Mr. Chair, no common stormwater structures involved, so they're all separate entities for the purposes of stormwater.
Great. Understood. Ms. Reed, if you are available, if, I mean, not available, you're here, obviously, but if you can for 791 Lemonster Road?
791, sure. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 28th, 2024 at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass., to hear and review an application for stormwater management permit pursuant to 204-1D of code of the town of Lunenburg, as amended at the November 17th, 2020 special town meeting by Timrick Realty Trust for construction of a single-family home on a vacant lot. The subject property information, the location is 791 Lemonster Road, assessor's map, 119 parcel four, lot two. Owner is Timrick Realty Trust at 81 View Street in Pittsburgh, Mass. 01420. Materials are viewable at the planning office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Ryan Proctor. I'm with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group. As mentioned, we filed a stormwater permit for three separate lots individually. The board may remember, earlier this year in January, another person from my office appeared before you with an A&R plan for the creation of these three lots of the parent parcel, which is shown on this exhibit plan, on the corner of Lemonster Road and Kilburn Street. So lots one and two are located off of Lemonster Road on the left and right respectively, and then lot three is located with a property address on Kilburn, Kilburn Street. The reason we filed three separate applications is because lot two is to be conveyed to an owner of the parent parcel and lots one and three will be conveyed or sold separately. So we didn't, we didn't want to end up with a situation where we had one stormwater permit and a project completion would be contingent on a separate owner and separate contractor potentially finishing work. So that's why we filed the three applications. The way your stormwater bylaw is written in 204-1D is that any project with a cumulative and collective disturbance of over one acre of disturbance triggers the need for a stormwater permit. Individually, none of the lots exceed one acre of disturbance. So lot one is just under 20,000 square feet of disturbance. Lot two is 35,000 square feet and lot three is under half an acre as well, just about 18,000 square feet. But since they were derived from the same property, they collectively alter about 80,000 square feet, so just under 2,000, or two acres, excuse me, which is why we're before you tonight. It was written into the record at 791 Lemonster Road is this address. We did not have street addresses at the time of filing, so all of our documents reference lot two, which was per the A&R plan that your, your board endorsed. So I'm just going to switch over to our actual site plan for lot two.
All right. While you do that, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions of the land use director. So I just want to, it sounds like this is totally fine, but I just want to make sure we can, I know we need, as was pointed out, since all the work together is over an acre, it triggers site, not site, it triggers stormwater, even though no individual lot is, the work on no individual lot is triggering it. Is it still cool to have it as three separate applications?
It is.
Great.
Yeah. And this is, it's a strange trigger, but nonetheless, they are three separate lots for the benefit of the applicant, certainly as described. And under our town regulations, it's best to have each one of these looked at and dealt with as single lots with single stormwater structures that function for that lot, particular lot.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't accidentally running afoul of something with the structuring. Super.
I have a follow-up question to the land use, land use director. So is this a carry-on from the previous request of us to ask for a peer review that we don't have a peer review already? Or do we, and I'm just not seeing it?
I think in this case, you know, if you want a peer review, then you can go ahead and require it, if you see something that you think rises to that level. But I don't think by default, you necessarily need it with single-family houses like that. If the structure, you know, is appropriate and the design is appropriate, as I think it is, it's a, it's a pleasure of the board whether you want to require a peer review. It's not mandatory.
Yeah, no. Every single one we have had has had a review.
I think we almost always.
So I appreciate that you're the land use director, but you're not an engineer and none of us are engineers. And so we're just going to take at face value what the applicant's engineer has to tell us about it without having our review engineer.
It's a pleasure of the board if you want to require a peer review. If you see anything that you think needs further analysis, then.
Just me as one member, I would appreciate that all applications before us get peer reviewed.
Okay. So for each one, then, you need to vote to authorize peer review by Graves for a certain amount?
So they can't possibly get through stormwater permit without two meetings at least? And that's if the review can happen between the two meetings?
Yeah, that.
That's a little difficult.
It's a pleasure of the board.
When we say the pleasure of the board, if the pleasure of the board is that they have a peer review done before they submit to us, is that something we can say?
I think that gets problematic for the reason that I mentioned. It's a statutory requirement, so by law, there's a process that should be followed procedurally. And that does require, under statute, assigning a peer review for an amount by motion and vote. So it becomes problematic if we're doing all of that before the public hearing is even opened. So it becomes problematic if we're doing all of that before the public hearing is even opened.
Sure. It, if, if we're always, if we always want a peer review, are we just making things more difficult by saying, you have to come to the first meeting, then you have to leave and come back with a peer review? Because if we're always going to ask for a peer review, what are we doing with the first meeting other than making things more difficult for applicants?
If you wanna, if that's been your practice and you wanna continue that, then that's what I'll apply.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I can't think of a stormwater we haven't had peer reviewed. So. And my apologies for kinda interrupting your presentations for this, but we're, again, a- as we feel out, as we feel out the new relationship, as it were, and figure out how, how we work together. You know, 'cause I think we have always had peer reviews on stormwater. There have been site plans, much, I mean, rarely, but there have been things like site plans, we haven't need anything for sure, but I think, I can't think of a stormwater we haven't wanted the peer review because of the, I mean, just double-checking the numbers even.
Well, not only that, I mean, we had stormwater permit required from two thousand eight, and we didn't actually have our first one until Adam was your, your previous, your predecessor. So we waited eight years after it was on the books, after the legislative body said, we wanna have a stormwater permit. It took the executive or whatever, eight years to follow up. Again, not your problem, you're new and welcome to Lunenburg, this is.
Yes, I recommend that you get a presentation and you continue to date certain, so we can connect the peer review. But doing it, answer the public hearing, I have not had that experience.
And I'll do a little background research to make sure I'm not misunderstanding some steps and that, that we're not potentially misunderstanding some steps in the process as we, as we've done them in the past as well, but we can loop back on that. For now, regardless, we have applications before us tonight in the status, and we can move forward with that. Great, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, as I mentioned, this, uh, lot that we're presenting is formerly known as lot two, which is seven ninety-one Lemonster Road. The proposed project is a single-family house, uh, accessed by a short paved driveway. It will have a new, uh, drilled well on the property to service the house and a new sewage disposal system. This lot of the three was the most unique, uh, we have permitted this with the Conservation Commission and the lot area, uh, the upland portion of the site on Lemonster Road. Uh, there was not adequate space to accommodate a septic design on this particular portion of the site. So if I can go over and just point, uh, to the exhibit plan down on the bottom. The proposal for the septic system is to run a force main, uh, through the wetland, temporarily, uh, disturb the wetland, restore it, and then the sewage disposal system for lot two would be located on the opposite side of the wetland in another upland portion of the site. We have permitted that, um, with the Conservation Commission, they did vote to issue an order of conditions, I believe we just either received that today or this week. Um, and we have received a permit from the Board of Health as well. With respect to the stormwater design, we are proposing to capture and treat all stormwater associated with both the roof area and the paved driveway. We have a stone recharge trench along the east side of the driveway and around the building foundation, and then we have a small grass swale, which stormwater will be routed to on the, uh, to the, down to the right on the plan, uh, of the house. That will capture stormwater and then slowly dis- discharge it into a level spreader at the limit of work. So those are the two stormwater devices that we have, again, it's just to capture and infiltrate, uh, and provide treatment of stormwater associated with the impervious area on the site. That is an overview of the site, there's not much else going on on that lot in particular, uh, if there's any questions on that, I would be happy to take them.
I'm personally just processing the, the, the plan and everything for a moment. So I see the stone recharge trench going effectively around three sides of the house and down the driveway.
That's correct, everything pitches back away from Lemonster Road and ends up in that wetland system, so we're capturing it before it gets there and, and routing it to our devices.
Help me understand the, um, is that another recharge trench at the back of the lot there, or?
That's correct, so any water that's captured in that swale, uh, I can just go point to it. If the storage volume in that swale is exceeded, it will spill over the stone spillway, uh, down, just downgraded that, and into the level spreader, and the thought process in that is that any water that's exceeds that volume would be spread out over a large area rather than having one point discharge, which is more prone to erosion and scour.
God, okay, I, I was thinking the spillway going the other way, and I was really confused, now that makes total sense, okay, I get it. Yeah? I mean. Personally, I. I think I get what we're, I get what I'm looking at. I still, I would personally still want, uh, peer review just to, again, make sure, because we have had peer review catch miscalculations and everything. But I get it.
Well, just an, excuse me, i- if I may, ju- just that as an aside, uh, i- i- is my, my experience as a civil engineer, uh, the, the stormwater calculations for the, the four year, the four different events, storm events?
Uh, five in Lunenburg, so we have to do the fifty, I think.
Okay, which, they're usually at least an inch thick?
We calculated for the, uh, at least, I think the two years, uh, three.
The eight-and-a-half by eleven copy set is usually like an inch thick?
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
The stormwater calculations, right?
Yep.
They're, they're like hundreds of, typically sixty, eighty pages?
Yeah, that's about right, yep. Smaller for a site like this.
Gonna look through sixty, eighty pages?
No, I, I, I say calculations, that's probably, this is where I'm using my layman terms. There's times they come back and go, hey, you figured this incorrectly. And I don't know what we call it when they go, hey, this wasn't, when this, when the peer review engineer comes back and goes, yeah, you said flow rate of X, but that kind of setup's gonna be a flow rate of Y.
Exactly.
No, I. Uh, thoughts from the board?
So if this was just a one-off, there would not be a peer review because it was underneath.
If, yeah, if.
With all stormwater in general.
Yeah, if this how, if this. If this were built by itself, it would not be a stormwater, not peer review, which is just us saying to the town and to the engineer contracted by the town, hey, look at this for us. If this were just by itself in isolation, uh, less than an acre of disturbance, then, no, it would not require stormwater. But because this is part of a grander project, um, and that total project disturbs over an acre of land, that is what triggers. And that is to prevent, uh, developers from just kind of saying, well, I'm not doing, I'm not doing one forty-acre project, I'm doing fifty just slightly under an acre projects, or, or forty acres, but forty projects each disturbing slightly less than an acre. Because they're all acre lots and we're leaving a fraction of it undisturbed. That's to capture that kind of approach.
Could I add one thing to that, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
Could I add one thing to that?
Please.
Um, so that regulation, regula- relative to land disturbance is specific to Lunenburg, so per the Massachusetts stormwater standards, any development of four single-family residential homes or less does not trigger the requirement to meet those standards. So your land disturbance is, is specific to Lunenburg, that's, that's the trigger.
Yes, it is, no, and that's a fair point, thank you, we do have, we did in crafting the current stormwater bylaw, I can't speak to the thought process or even what the previous one was off the top of my head. The current stormwater bylaw, when this board did craft it, we were intentionally thoughtful about, more thought, attempted to be, 'cause people debate whether or not it is, but we tried to be more thoughtful about making sure that we were really dealing with stormwater, um, holistically and completely. Closing what could be some loopholes, as well as a couple of our standards are higher than what the state required based on what we deemed appropriate at the time.
So if we require the peer review, is that roughly five thousand dollars or roughly fifteen thousand dollars? Like, is it each house, they're gonna have to get a peer review?
Yeah, I hope we don't require fifteen thousand dollars.
How much, what, so, um, this is where, again, it's often been the case for us that we said, that, uh, peer review has often been, uh, seemingly been ready to go for us. Or has been, or we've just said, yeah, we need peer review on this, and the answer's been, okay. So things like the dollar figures of peer review are not something we have discussed as a board previously. So those numbers aren't one we're familiar with, so I think the question is, uh, if I may attempt, Mr. McLeod, how much would this peer review be?
For a standard stormwater review?
Yeah.
For something like this, about three thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that would be all three?
Each one, yeah. Anytime you're, you have an individual stormwater management system, it's, generally speaking, in my experience, at least three thousand dollars. Even for a small lot and one structure. It, it becomes expensive and some, I'm just mindful, I've always been mindful because it's always been brought to my attention, that's a lot of money for tax, it's, it's just one of those considerations of the Balancing Act. It needs to be done, there needs to be expertise for sure, I understand the board's appetite for that, I just look through the regulations and it's, I guess pleasure of the board is not the best term, but the term of art here is just your discretion, it is not required. And then there's nothing that says it must be submitted and required and provided before the public hearing. And it talks about other department heads actually in, in the town, DPW Director, the Building Commissioner, the way in, but not necessarily the peer reviewer, so. I, I'm just sort of a stickler for the regulations and what they require and say, 'cause I hate to see the town get caught by someone saying, you're, you're kind of being arbitrary here. But I think the, obviously, I think the planning board's perfectly within its province to, to require a peer review, a technical review, if that's what they want, you had, it says there you have the discretion to do so. Or not.
All right.
So I guess, Mr. Chair, my recommendation at this point, given the input from the board is, you, so, um, I'm hearing that the board wants peer review, and so the minimum estimate for that should be three thousand dollars paid by the applicant, so the peer review can be conducted before next public hearing.
So I think where I come down on this as an individual is. I, uh, I was, I am not coming into this prepared for the discussion of should be, we be requiring peer review, because we kind of just have always said, oh, we feel like this needs peer review, and the answer's been great. Um, we haven't done it willy-nilly, but we have often done it for things like stormwater. I hear the concern about cost. I am, I guess, in a position, I, if told to make a decision tonight, I would want peer review. Given time to chew it over, I might feel differently in another meeting. That meeting's in a month.
Let me suggest to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
That the peer review not only. It's not protecting us in any sort of a way, but our, our charge here is to protect all the citizens in the town, not just the new development people, not just the new houses. We are here to protect the existing abutters, okay, and if we don't know anything about what's being proposed to us, then how are we going to be able to discern that that may or may not work properly, or if that's not even up to snuff? How are we gonna do that without a peer review? So in my mind, there should not be any question in your mind, but we're, they're different minds, so.
I don't think I'm very far from you, Mr. Allison. I, I am, I am open to the possibility. I, I, I think I would, it would take a lot for me to feel comfortable knowing the stormwater problems this town faces that are not unique to this town, but are in fact the stormwater problems faced by, I mean, the world right now, I mean.
Right.
Watch the news, right? I, I would be hard-pressed to think that I wouldn't end up in a place where I personally feel peer review is the appropriate method. But I can envision a world where my mind has changed, that could save the applicant some money, but it costs him a month, so. I don't know how, I'm not trying to steer the board in that direction, I'm thinking out loud. On the other hand, if, I would be very comfortable also just saying, yeah, we, we do want the peer review.
Seeing as we, like, to some degree or another, do not have an actual vote on this, like, if they meet requirements, we're required to say yes, if they don't meet requirements, we can say no. And because none of us are geotechnical engineers, the idea that this would be done with anything other than a peer review, which an expert for the town says, yes, this is good, doesn't seem feasible to me. I don't, I don't see a way forward that doesn't involve an expert telling us, an expert who works for the town saying, yes, this is acceptable.
Your thoughts, Mr. McLeod?
Just the thoughts, so that, I mean, the experts before us are providing a plan that they say meet the standards and stuff, and it comes down to whether or not we, you know, trust them or, you know, have competence in their, their, you know, abilities, so. I mean, I'm new to this, so it'd be interesting if we do go with the, the peer reviews, just to see, you know, what the peer review, uh, responses are, if they come back and say they need to throw in a few extra pieces of stone over here, I'd, I'd feel pretty bad that we charged him three thousand dollars for, for that, but it, again, it's lack of experience on, on my part to know exactly, but, I mean, part of me is, you know, a local company that's coming before us and saying that, you know, it meets the standards that, you know. I, I guess part of what I'm hung up on too is, I, being very, I mean, everything everyone's saying is logical, is that it's times three. But not to say the next one, I wouldn't be like, oh, yeah, I can't really follow that one, that one should.
I will say that we have had, um, very respected engineers, uh, locally, come before the board, and still have peer review say, because it's a, it's a review, it isn't. It isn't a sign of a lack of faith in the engineers who have designed it, it's, maybe it's a sign in the lack of faith in humanity because we are inherently imperfect creatures, prone to, uh, um, mistakes. And, uh, as well as differences of opinion that sometimes need to be rectified, uh, with each other. But it's not, it's not a, a sign of lack of faith in the engineers, it's, mistakes happen, another set of eyes. And frankly, a dispassionate set of eyes that isn't, that isn't gonna have the logical fallacies that come with, well, I know this person, it's my office, or whatever. Yeah, I think, no, I think, uh, I hear good points, Ms. Reed, I don't want you to feel excluded from the discussion.
I don't feel excluded, thank you, but I, I would agree with, um, Mr. Wilsner's comments about, it, it makes sense that if we are not engineers, I know I'm not, um, it would make sense for it to be reviewed by someone who would be able to contribute a lot more knowledge than, than I would have on the subject.
All right. Well, with three of us having a strong opinion and me also leaning more in that direction the more we talk about it, um, it seems like it would make sense to have a motion to, whatever the magic words are here.
Require peer review for this stormwater design and the amount of three thousand dollars to be paid by the applicant.
And the three thousand is a.
It's called a fifty-three G account.
Yeah, but if the peer review costs less, we're not charging them three thousand regardless.
No, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
It goes back to the applicant, and that happens sometimes, but, um, we presently have no funds, no money to pay a peer reviewer, so you need, that has to be authorized.
All right.
By motion and vote.
And I know that it is the applicants who pay. And I know that it is the applicants who pay every time for the peer review as part of the process when we do it. All right.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
An aye from myself. All right, if we have no other topic, nothing else on this, we could continue to a...
Public hearing, public comment.
Oh, thank you, I forget that sometimes when there's not, doesn't seem as many people. Yeah, no, before we go on, is there public comment, please? Seeing none, none in Zoom, all right.
Oh, I do have a hand up, let me see, Dylan Joan Hoyt.
I just, this is Joan Hoyt, we live at 39 Kilburn Street. I'm just not sure whether this public comment is only for 97, excuse me, 791, we're interested in the lot proposed for 70 Kilburn Street. So if it's, if it's applying to all three of them, then I would have some public comment, but if it's only to the first of the three, then I don't at the moment.
This is only for 791, and the good news is, I suspect, now that we've had some of our other high, high-level discussions, we'll move through them hopefully at a more rapid rate and get where your concern is.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. With no other public comment, I would look for a motion probably to continue this public hearing to a date certain, November 25th, 2024, at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Seconded the discussion. Is that gonna give enough time for the 43, 53G account deposit and the request and the review?
Depends on, it always depends on when you get the money.
It's a month, though, so.
So we can chew for that and continue if we don't get the funds in and...
I like that idea. If Graves is amendable, I think this is a pretty small project in their eyes, so.
Won't take long to do the review itself.
Which is worth mentioning.
Great, moved and seconded. All right, moved and seconded. All in favor? Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
And aye from myself. All right, great. Next up would be 795 Lemonster Road. Take it away, Ms. Reed.
Let me pull it up real quick. Okay, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 28th at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for stormwater management permit pursuant to 204-1D of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the November 17th, 2020 special town meeting by Timrick Realty Trust for construction of a single-family home on a vacant lot. Subject property information, the location is 795 Lemonster Road, assessors map 119, parcel four, lot one, owner is Timrick Realty Trust, 81 View Street in Fitchburg, Mass. 01420. Materials are viewable at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Still me.
Yep.
All right, Ryan Proctor, Dillison Roy, again, for the record, representing the applicant. We are now moving on to Lot One, which is in the top left of our exhibit plan. This was a lot that had approximately 18,000 square feet of disturbance. Similar to the previous lot, we are again proposing a single-family house, which will be accessed by a new paved driveway. There are wetlands, jurisdictional to Conservation Commission on the north portion of the site, which is just at the top of the page. Similar to the previous projects, we have permitted this project with the Conservation Commission as well as Nishoba Board of Health, so we do have a permit for the septic system. For stormwater on this one, again, we are proposing to infiltrate, or, excuse me, capture the stormwater associated with the roof area with a series of roof drains that would discharge to a stone swale on the northeast side, which is up and to the right on the plan of the driveway. That would be captured and routed into a beehive grate and then ultimately discharged down towards the wetlands into a stormwater management area, and similar to the previous design, if that storage capacity is exceeded, it would spill over the spillway into a level spreader and then evenly distributed back towards the wetland, almost identical to the previous design. The driveway will be super elevated to route water to that northeast side to guide water towards those stormwater management devices. Just because of topography, there is a small section of pavement near the road that is unable to be captured, but we do have our construction management entrance temporary, which will be there during construction, and we have submitted a stormwater report in accordance with your regulations and the state regulations as well. I will be brief on that one, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I find it, this is nothing about this project negative at all, though, but it's, I look at it and go, oh, okay, there's a, I mean, there's a few, there's a few recharge trenches, a 75 linear foot pipe to move water to a detention basin, or infiltration basin, I should say. It's funny, because I look at it and go, oh, this is a very simple design, and then it shocks me, the amount of work that goes into, quote, "simple" stormwater management now. And that's not a fault at all, it's just the nature of trying to deal with this environmental Thoughts, questions from the board? Seeing none, feel free to interrupt me, I will also look for public comment, and this is on 795 Lemonster Road.
I have a hand on Zoom.
Oh, great.
Hi, I'm Sue Rowe, I live at 710 Lemonster Road. I just wanted to add that when you're looking at this, this is a high stormwater area, it's, the Lemonster Road is very low, it's surrounded by all the hills, where lot number two is, it's about the lowest spot among all the hills, and we do have a big stormwater problem on that part of Lemonster Road. Right across from me, lots of times in the winter, it doesn't clear off and it freezes, or accidents down there a lot, and I know lot two has the same problem. That's right on a hill and drains and creates a big water problem down at the bottom, so I just wanted to add that when you're looking at it.
So I apologize, my, my hearing isn't wonderful, I only have one ear that works.
Sorry.
And so, and the acoustics in this, while I love this beautiful meeting room, sometimes the acoustics coming from the TV leave, something to be desired. So to make sure, you were saying that Lemonster Road does have pooling issue, issues with pooling on the road?
This stretch.
As it is now?
From the Lemonster side of Cherry Hill Farm? So it's got the hill that Cherry Hill Farm is on, it's got the hill that my house is on, it continues up and also across the street where the Carols live, so where these new houses are, it's the lowest area. So the water will all pool down there, where the first house we discussed is, that's actually sub-level to the road, and we're still having trouble, the water doesn't drain, and in the winter it freezes, and there are a lot of accidents. And I know the one you're discussing now also has a problem with water coming off the hills onto the road.
I, you say that, and I suddenly go away, I know the spot she means. There we go.
Okay. So I just wanted to add that, it's not flat topography here.
No, thank you, and that's a fair point. There is, there are extant runoff issues, and this will hopefully at least not make it worse. I don't know enough about everything in the area to know how everything impacts otherwise.
Right, you would hope it wouldn't make it worse, and maybe something would make it better.
Do you have any comments or anything else? You don't have to, but...
No, no comment on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Other board comment or questions?
And move that we require, excuse me, a $3,000 deposit to the 53G account for this peer review? Is that adequate?
Seconded. Was Mr. Allison's wording good for...
Yeah, that was fine.
Great. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Aye from myself. All right, hearing no other questions, I would look for a motion to continue this public hearing to a date certain being November 25th, 2004, at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All right, should, still good with you for, that date for all these?
Please.
Okay, great. Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. All right. Now we're cooking with gas, let's go on to 70 Kilburn Street.
Okay, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 28th, 2024, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for stormwater management permit pursuant to 204-1D of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the November 17th, 2020 special town meeting by Timrick Realty Trust for construction of a single-family home on a vacant lot. Subject property information, the location is 70 Kilburn Street, assessors map 119, parcel four, lot three, owner is Timrick Realty Trust, 81 View Street, Fitchburg, Mass. 01420. Materials are viewable at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ryan Proctor, still with Dillison Roy.
Excellent.
Representing the applicant, yes. So we are now located, of course, on the one lot that's located over on Kilburn Street, on the exhibit plan, it's down into the right side of the page. Similar to the previous projects, the proposed project involves the construction of a single-family home with a new sewage disposal system, in this case, it's actually located between the house and the road. There will be a new well on the property, and we've proposed a stormwater management system similar to the previous ones. On the east side of the driveway, which is planned down, we will have a berm on the side of the driveway, which will route water coming down the driveway, everything on the site, with the exception of a small area next to the septic slopes from Kilburn Street down into the property, so away from the road. And that berm will route stormwater into a grass swale stormwater management area on the bottom side of the site between the house and the wetland resource area, and similar to the previous projects, that will discharge via spillway and ultimately end up towards the wetland resource area. We have permitted this project with the Conservation Commission, they voted to issue an order of conditions, and we have received a septic permit from the Board of Health. I think I will leave it at that. We have two for two for peer review and a continuing, so I expect nothing less for this one, but I'm happy to take questions on it.
I, I, just looking at the topography on this one, it's a little more confusing to me, and it looks like, just want to make sure I understand correctly, the peak of the property is in the kind of middle of what we're looking at northeast.
Yeah, can I grab the mic and, and point on the plan?
Yeah, if it can go that far, I have no idea.
So the high point for the septic is a 381 contour, which is right here, and then it goes 380 down to 378 to a low point towards the road. Alternatively, on the house side, we have the 380 that pitches back towards the house and then ultimately towards a grass swale, so this is 379, down to 377, down to 372, and then ultimately back towards the wetland resource area. The driveway itself enters at the 375 elevation, and then pitches right down to 372 before flattening out in this landing area next to the house, and then ultimately, like I said, towards a stormwater management area, and then out towards the back of the site.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, I would look to the public, and I believe we do have anticipated public comment on this.
Hello, this is Joan Hoyt, 39 Kilburn Street, right directly across Kilburn Street from the proposed site. I have a few comments and questions, and I would also like to ask if it will be possible for me to submit some pictures and some videos of the water that is down there. I don't, I don't know quite how that happens, but the, getting the permission for that.
I'll have you start with the questions, and we can go over submitting the videos and pictures and everything after that.
Okay, thank you. So our house is located in what everybody calls the big curve on Kilburn Street, and you come down the hill from Lemonster Road, and there's a large curve, and then Kilburn Street goes along. This is a point, a problematic area because there's a lot of water in the road, completely across the road. The road floods quite regularly, and my husband goes down and cleans out a storm drain there to try to dry up the road because it's, it's very dangerous. And people come down from Lemonster Road much too fast, and they hit the corner, and they can't make the corner. And we've seen people drive off the road and have to be pulled out by, you know, tow trucks. And one day, when I was coming home from work, I had just pulled into my driveway, and a car came down from Lemonster Road, it was, it was the middle of the winter, and of course, they came too fast, and I watched them as they came right across the road toward my car, which was about six feet from the road, in my driveway, of my driveway, and he just barely missed me. So it's a very dangerous corner, there are accidents, there are all kinds of things there, but of course, what we're talking about here mostly is the water, and the water can, it can go across the road for, I'm, I'm a word person, not a numbers person, but I'm guessing 30 or 40 feet of water across the road, and longer than that up and down the road. So, and, and where this house is proposed to go with the driveway, if I understood the drawings correctly, the driveway is going to be almost directly across from our driveway, and it really worries me about having two driveways enter, possibly trying to enter the road at the same time on an icy flooded corner. The, the other thing is that where the house is proposed is about the only area where anything could be constructed there because it's wetlands all around it. And I have, I have some photos and videos which show running water in, in the, in the area, right there, right at that, those, these, these locations, where even on a sunny day, if we've had water, if we've had rain a day or two ago, the water just runs down across that, across the property. So I understand that, you know, they want to make sure that they don't have water in their house, but it's, it's at a location that I just think is really problematic for both water and accidents and danger.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna continue on this topic, and then once we're done, then we'll, we'll get on to how you can submit your videos and everything, because you want to put those in, we'll make sure they're there.
Thank you.
Now, I just want to seek a quick point of clarification. Are you worried about runoff from the driveway into that area, or just worried about having two opposing driveways, as you understand it?
I'm worried about runoff from that whole area because it's, it's not even runoff. I mean, right now, that whole curve can be completely underwater on the street.
So I, I don't know off the top of my head if, if the, what she describes is correct for the layout or not, because I don't know, like, I know that curve vaguely, I don't have any layout in my mind, so do you have any thoughts or response on it?
I can speak to two of those items relative to the wetland location. As I mentioned, we did permit it with the Conservation Commission, it's in accordance with the local wetland regulations and the state regulations, so we did achieve that permitting, and then relative to stormwater, as I mentioned, the site does pitch back towards our property, so we're... So we're not introducing any new flow from our development into the road. And we've taken care with our grading on the site and the location of the drainage features to make sure that water is not ponding next to our house and that it's getting to where it's going now, which is the wetland resource area.
Okay. So Ms. Hoyt, did you understand that response? Do you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, I understood the response, and I appreciate it. My husband and I attended several of the Conservation Commission meetings, and we brought up some of these issues, and we were told that they had nothing to do with the Conservation Commission, that that was planning board. So, and that their decision would not, would not even consider the water issue. So that's why we're asking again in this meeting. I understand that, as the gentleman from Dillison Roy just said, they got permission from the Conservation Commission, but that, from what we were told, it really didn't, they really weren't looking at water issues. They were looking at wildlife and environmental things, not necessarily water in the road and how the water gets out of the road.
So I think that's a good point. Conservation Commission does deal with wetlands, but that is separate from, separate but adjacent to stormwater. And we are here tonight to look at the stormwater plans. And as has been described, the site largely slopes away from the road there. So, I mean, I'm not an engineer. I don't see how this design is going to create a lot more flow at the road. But again, we will also, I'm assuming, I'm betting the board's about to vote in favor of peer review of this plan as well, to help kind of make sure that's all squared away. Otherwise, water, planning board can deal with things like the stormwater permit. Water that is getting into the road otherwise isn't really our purview, but I don't, like, aside from making sure DPW knows, this is, I mean, this is one of the ongoing issues in town. We talk about in capital planning a lot, because every year, you're going to, we have more and more culverts that need work, we have drainage issues on roads in town that need to be addressed. And as Mr. Willsner pointed out, that's one of the reasons the town is exploring the possibility of a stormwater utility, to be able to work on mitigating these things without directly draining our capital funds every year. Would you add anything to that, Mr. Riley?
I would say the stormwater regs apply to all the surrounding property, including the road. So it's a pretty stringent local bylaw, but it's designed specifically to deal with all off-site runoff, so wherever it goes. And Conservation Commission is, in many cases, the steward of stormwater, depending on the application. So, you know, they're critical because the stormwater goes off into the wetlands, it needs to be treated and needs to meet their regulations, but, so they're integral to stormwater management, particularly if you can't deal with it in an effective way elsewhere. So, but I would say, you know, in this case, this is a challenging site that would benefit from peer review, so I'd definitely recommend that it's looked at here. Although, just to this, all this discussion, we rely heavily in our profession on the experts. And how do we know they're experts? They have a stamp. And if they prepare plans that aren't accurate or don't work, they put their stamp at risk, their professional license at risk. So that, along with comments we received through the open gov application from the actual other department heads that are identified, the stormwater regs, we're relying on all that to say, without a peer review, okay, this seems reasonable or manageable. But the permitting authority is the planning board, so it's discretion of the board whether you feel comfortable with all of that or need further review. And this is a case where we're hearing, whenever I hear from a butter or, you know, a resident, then that to me is, okay, this needs further review.
Makes sense. And Ms. Hoyt, you said that you have video and photos you'd like to submit. Would they send that to, what's the email address they would use to send those?
They could send it to Logan or myself.
Yep.
We're on the planning board webpage.
Yep.
Yep, if you Google Logan Town of Lunenburg, my staff directory page will be the first result, and that has my email there. It's also just L O C O N N E L L at lunenburgma.gov. Yeah, if you, if you wanted to email that to me now even, I could upload it.
Great. And then we'll, but as long as we have it, I mean vaguely soon, it can then be ready for us for the next meeting to be in the files, and we can take a look at it then, too, when we also have the peer review and everything else.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Great. Thoughts or comments from the board?
I move that we require a $3,000 deposit into the 553G account for peer review.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Mr. McLeod.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Willsner.
Aye.
Ms. Reed.
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Before I just look, entertain a motion to close the public hearing unless there's other comments, I anticipated one public comment. Are there any other public comments on this public hearing? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to continue to a date certain, November 25, 2024 at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Oh, I have another from Joan Hoyt.
Oh, please, Ms. Hoyt.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for hearing us and for seriously considering a lot of the issues. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. We have a motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Mr. McLeod.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Willsner.
Aye.
Ms. Reed.
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Whewee.
Thank you. One more.
That is true. All right.
I should get you some hats, Ryan, I'm sorry.
And finally, site plan approval, public hearing, 1260 Reservoir Road.
Okay, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 28, 2024 at 6:05 PM. Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-8.4B of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the August 22, 2016 special town meeting by PJ Keating Company for construction of a new quality control building. Subject property information, the location is 1260 Reservoir Road, assessors map 142, parcel number 7-0. Owner is the heirs to Paul J. Keating, 998 Reservoir Road, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. Materials are viewable online at lunenburgma便开的opengov.com/records/11422, or in person at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ryan Proctor with Dillison Roy, I'm representing PJ Keating. I'm joined by Rod Pagani of PJ Keating Company. We have submitted an application for a site plan review at 1260 Reservoir Road for the construction of a new quality control lab, which on the plan is shown outlined in red. This will replace an existing quality control building, which is shown just below the proposed building. It's in gray hatched. The location of the new building will take place within an area currently utilized as parking. There is a grass slope behind the building that we intend to pave. So I submitted some architectural plans with this building. The only access for the new quality control building will actually be around the back, which is the west side of the building on the plan or the left side of the page. So if you're looking at it from Reservoir Road, you will see the roof, and then as the existing pavement tapers away, you'll see increased level of foundation reveal. And then you would drive around the back or walk around the back to access the facility through one of two mandors. The entire frontage along Reservoir Road in this area where the project is happening is currently paved. We are not proposing any modifications to the existing curb cut. The building will tie into an existing sewage disposal system, which is located to the west of the building, which currently serves the existing quality control building. We will install a new septic tank, and we have submitted a permit, a plan to the Board of Health, seeking approval for that. The project, because it involves the construction of a new commercial building, is subject to the stormwater standards. So along with our site plans and application narrative, I did support, I did submit a cover letter relative to stormwater management. The property that is currently utilized on this side of the road alone is approximately 45 acres. A large majority of the stormwater from that site is currently contained on, on the property. It all discharges back away from the road into the site, and that is not, that is the same as what's proposed here. So runoff from the proposed roof and the lower parking area that we're converting the grass to pavement will be routed back into the facility and infiltrated on site. We are not proposing to change the grades between the proposed building and the edge of the road. As I mentioned, we're proposing to maintain what's there currently for pavement. So the net increase in impervious area for this project is about 2,700 square feet on that 45 acre parcel. So we did support, submit some calculations relative to stormwater, and there is mathematically not any impact to the stormwater management on the property itself. We intend to construct a new water service connection to service the building, and then we will work with the utility company to either piggyback off the existing service, our service is the existing quality control building, or provide a new service. There's utility poles currently right along the frontage of the site and throughout the property. For lighting, we are proposing only lighting on top of the mandors in the back. As I mentioned, there's no access on the Reservoir Road side of the building, and there's existing lighting on the facility that is adequate to handle the parking area. So just lighting on the rear side of the building for access purpose only. I think I will leave it at that. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
So you're adding pavement, slope moves rainwater further back, like, back into the property?
Yes, we're not changing, yeah, the where it's going now.
Yeah.
Yep.
And this is just an increase in pavement in the new QC building, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Can I just mention something? I heard, I heard discussion about a stormwater application, but that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, was this, I, the documents I have are for a site plan approval, and I believe in open gov, that's all that was submitted for 1260 Reservoir. So the Massachusetts stormwater standards are, have their requirement for new commercial construction. So we just, we submitted that memo to address those standards relative to the construction of the new commercial building.
So it doesn't trigger local stormwater permit? It just requires, it triggers, we have to review for certain Massachusetts guidelines? Is that correct? Or not, but what requirements?
I do not believe we tripped the local regulations for a stormwater permit. We are well below a negative disturbance.
Sounded like it was below, yeah. But regardless, we can't have a discussion in open meeting when it's not on the agenda, and I don't, Amanda read it, I didn't hear it mentioned as stormwater.
It wasn't in the notice.
But just wanted to mention that.
Is this a stormwa, we certainly cannot review a stormwater permit that's needed that's not on the agenda. If a stormwater consideration is required, I'm going to turn to you, Chris, and ask how this kind of parses out.
Yeah, drainage is part of site plan review under the criteria and the standards. So you, under that, you can talk about it.
Great, okay. Thank you. I was kind of piecing together a similar question, and you beat me well to it eloquently. Thank you. Board, I mean, to me, this one feels delightfully straightforward for a change, but that's only to me. I look to the board.
I'd like to ask the land use director if the review fee would be the same for this if we wanted it?
We have a different review fee for site plan review, so we'd have to calculate that, but yeah.
Does the motion have to say a specific?
If the planning board feels like you need further review for this project, my recommendation would be, it could not be more straightforward or simple. It's in an industrial zone, it's an industrial use.
I certainly don't disagree.
That's up to the board if you want to require peer review. We'd have to calculate that fee and then assign the peer review. So we need a motion and vote.
I, I don't see anything that gives me personal concern for needing a site, needing a peer review on a site plan review as opposed to stormwater, but I'm open to being convinced otherwise.
I'm not really interested in convincing anybody on this one, because Keating's has been here longer than I have, and they, they own that part of town, so.
Yeah.
And as, as was explained, anything they do wrong is going to fall back on them anyway. However, I do not want to be looked at as being partial or impartial. I mean, across the board is kind of how I try to roll, so anyways, again, I'm not going to try to convince anybody.
Fair.
Just wanted to say it.
Fair. I would look for, because there's plenty of bodies in the room, I would look for public Seeing none. All right. And Zoom, if you've got a public comment, get that hand up there. Board comment or questions?
Not trying to sway anybody, but this applicant would be one of the least affected
I hear that. I think I personally land, I just, I don't see the need here, because this is delightfully boring, to my way of thinking. But I look to the board for comment.
I'm not even going to make the motion.
What's that?
I said, I'm not even going to make the motion.
Great. I mean, maybe that's overly biased in my review, I don't want to do that, but in that case, I'm hearing no questions, I am hearing no concerns, I am hearing no public comment. I'm hearing our resident experts say this is about as straightforward as it gets. So I would look for a motion to approve the site plan review. Wait, do we need to do?
It's approval, by the way, it's not review anymore?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It is site plan approval. And do we need to attach conditions to this?
Probably shouldn't.
Standard conditions, I would.
Yeah, there's still regulations.
And we, yeah. I would look for a motion to.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, so picky, have to follow the law.
Sorry.
Look for a motion to close the public hearing for 1260 Reservoir Road.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Mr. McLeod.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Willsner.
Aye.
Ms. Reed.
Aye.
And an aye from myself. And I realize I say all in favor, but it's a roll call vote, so you actually could say what you want, but you're also going to deal with the fact that I said the same thing every time. My apologies. Okay. Further discussion from the board? Hearing none. I would look for maybe a motion to approve the site plan approval for, approve site planner for 1260 Reservoir Road with standard, with all standard conditions.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Mr. McLeod.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Willsner.
Aye.
Ms. Reed.
Aye.
And an aye from myself.
Thank you very much.
One for four.
Yep.
One for four, I think, yeah.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, and that is it for public hearings. Okay, and that is it for public hearings. Phew. Um, I see we have friends who are still in the room. Um, do we have members of the, I just want to kind of straw poll, because you've been sitting here a long time. Uh, do we have members of the public here for anything, as opposed to an applicant or something, here for anything in particular? That, all right.
255 Sunny Hill.
For 255 Sunny Hill, we'll have, I got good news for you. Let's move on to 255 Sunny Hill, because that's even next on the agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Uh, we've got the decision for 255 Sunny Hill Road, stormwater management permit.
So this has been looked at by Town Council Review, predates me, but I understand he recommended some adjustments and changes, and so he's forwarded a draft for your review and consideration, and my recommendation would be not to veer from that.
Okay.
Unless the board feels strongly in one way or another, but it's always best to err on the side of Town Council's recommendation.
Mm-hmm. And this would be the decision based on what was a split vote, two to two on the board, and that two to two vote with no majority thus is, uh, results in a denial. We weren't, we were kind of, we passed that off to make sure that's how it went. Town Council took a look. I am always happy to take Town Council's advice on the correct wording of legal documents. So I'm not encour, I am not encouraging us to not go through it as appropriate.
Have you, have you reviewed this, and are you aware, you've been in discussion with everybody involved? Can you just give us the back of the napkin discussion?
I have, I, uh, Mr. Riley could give you a better answer.
Because, because I know.
Yeah, this is Town Council's recommendation, so I wouldn't have comment on what he's proposing.
He's usually quite.
I don't know anything about it, really. I wasn't here. I don't know the background.
Do you know?
I did read it. His, his recommendation was pretty clear, and so he wordsmithed it and just the issues he saw, and so we have a draft decision for the board's review.
What is the final recommendation here? Because I know I was told that the vote that I made, I may not have been permitted to vote no for the reasons I did. Um, so I'm just, what, what is Town Council's final opinion here?
I, I believe it is, I, I mean, I have not spoken with Town Council on it. To my understanding, it is as written, that Town Council took the reasons and comments as provided and turned that into this document.
Gotcha.
I'm glad I didn't just say what I was going to say.
Um, so procedurally, this is something, we don't need a vote on this because, like, if, if it's good, we, I mean, unless there's a desire from the board to rewrite, we don't need to vote because it's already a decision we made. We just sign it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It was a motion and vote.
That's what I.
So he's prepared to document a draft decision that tightens it up a lot or addresses some of the concerns.
Mm-hmm.
So it seems to me that rather than just having the little blurb from Mr. Wilsner and myself, that he's added six pages of backup, right? CYA kind of stuff?
As long as you don't see anything totally inconsistent with what you said and approved or didn't approve.
He lists exactly what he said.
Yeah, he copied pasted our comments.
Exactly, so.
Nobody can, you know, substitute your permitting authority, but, you know, does the draft reflect your deliberation and your motions and votes and findings?
So is this, is this time sensitive?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I think, yes.
Okay.
Yes, there may be, you know, there's, there's always, everybody, you know, that is a petitioner has recourse or, you know, they decide how they want to proceed, and we need to give them some clarity.
Well, if Town Council has written this extra six pages and he's included exactly what I said, I have no problem with it because he's Town Council and that's what we have him for. So I'm good with it. I don't know.
Chris, you mind if I step off and try to print this?
Yeah.
And this is, I mean, this, this reflects my understanding of everything that happened.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'm good with that, too.
All right.
Great.
Well, that's just me, though.
Then Ms. Reed is not here to sign tonight physically.
You only need three signatures on it, though, don't you?
Well, whoever.
Legally?
Whoever voted should, should sign it.
Was, was she the absent one?
No.
Oh, she was, no, it was ineligible.
Yes.
That's right.
Mrs. McLeod was ineligible.
If she was ineligible because she missed.
No, it was Mr. McLeod.
Uh, Mr. McLeod was ineligible.
As he said, it was.
It's the Mullins rule.
When it began.
Yeah, so you definitely wouldn't want that.
Yeah, no, so it's, three of us here can sign. The fourth member who can't, who would be signing is absent.
Okay.
Or not absent, is here remotely. So I don't know what is needed in terms of, uh, if she just has to come in.
Three's enough.
Great, okay.
Physically unable to give the fourth signature, somebody was there. It's a quorum and it's a majority.
Yep, okay, super.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Is this not something that I can sign tomorrow? It has to be signed this evening?
That would be better, before we file it.
Yeah, if you can come in tomorrow, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I absolutely can come in tomorrow. I just, I couldn't make it physically there tonight. I can even drive in tonight if you need me to. I'm only five minutes away, but I'd prefer tomorrow.
No, it's.
Don't drive at night if you're uncomfortable. It's dangerous.
It's not that, it's just lunaburrs, five minutes. I can make it in tonight if you need me to.
Yeah, tomorrow, that, that would be fine. Then we, we're not going to file it until tomorrow.
Right.
Anyway.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so, uh, Mr. O'Connell is loading up the printer copier mega super machine over there that does everything. All right, while we are waiting on that, because it may take a moment to go through, is there a reason, because this isn't like a hearing or anything, can I just move us on and we hop back to that?
Yep.
Great. Um, all right, then I would move us to decision for 1335 Mass Ave, and that would be the old puppet theater.
So, Mr. Chair, in your staff report, prepare the draft decision. A little rough is a few things that I, I was made aware it needed to be changed, but I'll do that tomorrow. What I have is a signature page. So I'm asking the board to sign this for this decision, so we can do that, and then I can just make those slight changes to the body that you, of the text you see there. And you know that it can't, this can't go with any other decision because it's got a header on it that identifies it with the permit number.
Could you go over what the changes to the text as we have it are?
I didn't have the right vote and, or one of the members' names was wrong.
Yeah, sorry, Chris, I should, um, they, I, I caught those changes just a second, like, a second ago. Um, and I tried to whip together one that had the corrections. I don't know that it has the full ones, but the Word document that you guys have is closer to what I believe those corrections will look like. Um, the initial one was attached to the very end of the Director's Report PDF.
Yes, so we should, for the most updated, look at, um.
The Director's Report in the, in the.
Oh, Logan was saying there was a more recent.
There was a more recent one, but I, that was something I had cobbled together. This wasn't something I talked with Chris about because I didn't know, I, I didn't know if you had already.
It's accurate, reflects the motion and vote and what you.
Okay, so where would we look for that? Would that be in decisions?
Yep, decisions and then.
Oh, I see, O5B, yep.
Yep.
Decision approval, cool.
And so we moved on from 255 to 1335?
Yes, because now we just need to sign for 255 when it's.
Is it printed?
I just think it would be prudent to let the, the, the person in the audience know that you can come in the office and see it tomorrow, I guess, or whatever, but it's, nothing's changed.
It gets filed with the town clerk, and then there's a 20-day appeal period, so.
Yeah.
We can, we can get them a, so, a copy.
Do we have the copy of, so, just pausing us for a second, is 255 ready to sign?
No, um, maybe printing something on stairs. I've never had to print in Town Hall before.
Okay.
I should have had this prior, but.
All right, so 255, we've talked about it, we're going to sign. We need the physical copy to sign. Um, for those who are here for 255, that may or may not be enough for you tonight. We'll get that, we're going to get that done as soon as we figure out how to get it printed. One member still has to sign tomorrow regardless. Um, so I am going to be moving us, and I have moved us on to the.
Thank you, I just, I just wanted to let.
Yep, nope, nope, good, good to be more clear. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, maybe this is a good time for me to throw something out there, since I've thrown some stuff against the wall tonight. Um, so what I do, what I've done in these cases is prepare a signature sheet after explaining to you what the document with any revisions and corrections that need your review anyway in the meeting. After those are incorporated into the text, then I have the signature page to attach it. And you know that it has to be attached to that decision and it can't be attached to any other because it has the header and the identifier. So that's a procedural way.
Mm-hmm.
To spare you from the inconvenience of coming in and signing, which a lot of boards do.
Yeah.
So, but it's your choice.
Yeah, so we, I think we want to look and see what the, we want to double check, see what the changes are.
Yeah.
And then, um, I'm looking at Logan's Word document right now.
So he may be able to print that out tonight, so you have the whole thing, but.
Yeah.
In the event, we need to make some small corrections.
Yeah.
We can't do it here tonight. We can do it in the office tomorrow, and you've already signed the page that goes with it. As long as you know what the corrections would be.
And that's where I think we want to know what, I think we want to know specifically what the corrections are from what we're looking at.
Right.
So we can, um, we tend to be fairly anal about making.
Have to be, yeah, but so.
So.
About trying to not inconvenience the board members, but it has to be right. So if he found some scribbler's errors or some things, I, I know I was made aware by Mr. McLeod that, um, there were two things that needed to be corrected.
What were, do you remember what those were?
Uh, just my name and it was a unanimous vote.
And what?
A unanimous vote, I thought it was.
Ah. I see that this is a unanimous vote, and I see your name correctly.
And, well, the very bottom of this one has, like, there's a unanimous for, um, closing, and then at the very, very.
Oh. And you're, oh, and the.
There were two things. There was the waivers that you did a little.
Yeah, yeah, I see that now.
And I don't believe that was unanimous, but these are my notes that I, so I rely on the minutes and the video, and I didn't have either, so I just kind of winged it a bit, but, um, I think Logan's cleaned it up and.
Yep.
Probably.
Okay, and I see the additional conditions is four in favor, one against, which I believe is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just, yeah.
Okay, great. So we have Logan's cleaned copy that seems to, to me, to be reflective of what happened and have those errors fixed.
I can, I can pass out.
This is, okay, this is two, this is 255.
Yep.
That 133.
So something in red?
You can print that one, huh?
I don't know.
Was it you that signed something in red?
How did you do it? How did you print that?
Maybe it wasn't even.
I'm driving.
No, I just printed it.
Do you remember somebody signing something in red and we had to reprint it?
I'm sorry?
Do you remember somebody signing something in red and we had to reprint it? Anyway, blue or black is okay on these signatures, right?
Yeah.
Blue or black?
Yeah, yeah. So this is 255. I'm just going to put the signature page perpendicular to the others to make it easy to grab off the bottom. So this is 255, as we just read, signature page on the bottom.
Hopefully he's printing out 1335.
Yep. And Logan is printing out 1335 Mass Ave with the scribbler's errors fixed, so we know that we're signing with everything correct.
Thank you, Logan.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, this is 255.
Maybe I have another pen.
Why don't I sign that?
Okay.
Yeah, the pen's mats.
Blue pen is allowed?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see the sign, oh, because you have the signature page for this one.
So let's put that on that.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And this does not need a separate chair signature?
No.
Okay.
Cool.
There we go. So 255 Sunny Hill has been signed by three members of the board present. Ms. Reed is going to come in and sign it tomorrow at the planning office. And 11335 is getting signed by four members present. Ms. Reed can come in and sign tomorrow at the planning office. Booyah.
So that'll be filed with the town clerk tomorrow, and then 20-day appeal period, but you're.
It'll be filed tomorrow, so you're good to go.
We need to get that in.
Yeah, there's an appeal period, 20 days with the town clerk, but we'll talk tomorrow. Thank you.
Phew, thank you for your patience. It's a lot.
Yeah, one more on a certificate of completion, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
For stormwater.
Let's get to that. Certificates of completion, 319 Highland Street, compliance with stormwater management permit.
So they, they didn't have to be here, but they are.
Yep.
God bless them. Thank you.
Justin Casey.
Understood.
So, I know you gentlemen, three of you know me.
Justin Leclair, McCarty Engineering. Nice to meet both of you. So I'm just here if you guys have any questions. I know we had the ASBIL done, we submitted the ASBIL on with the letter verifying mainly the water quality volumes. I know that's the big thing that the plan board looks for, that these are designed appropriately. This one was actually constructed by Mr. Anderson himself. He's here tonight, and he made it larger than what we had originally designed. He had additional plant-ins. He made more of a landscape feature for his site, so.
I was shocked when I saw that, when they did my site inspection, but yes, they went above and beyond even for what you required and the standards require. So it looks all good to me. That's my recommendation.
All right.
But the board does have the authority to approve the certificate of completion.
Okay.
Nothing to sign, you just motion and vote, and I'll write up a memo.
I'm giving a quick looksee at the letter, but yeah, I think it's straightforward. How nice.
I think we've done these a couple times for you guys. I think we've done these a couple times for you guys.
Looks like you enjoy doing them, but it was such a robust, uh, product in the end.
I think you had fun.
And I assume it's working very well, too.
As far as we know, yes.
I didn't see any sign it wasn't, yeah.
All right. Um, any discussion from the board?
Was this the one where we had town drainage pipe exiting onto private property? I remember something funky like that on Highlands.
The other way. There was a catch basin off, just on the edge of the property, that had a pipe that kinda went somewhere.
Okay. It was questionable. I remember that, yeah. No problems?
Someday, we'll find out where, but not today.
Not today.
Done again.
And hearing no questions from the board yet or comments, though that may come, what would the motion be for, uh, the certificate of completion?
Motion, uh, to approve the certificate of completion for...
Three nineteen Highland Street. All right.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor. Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Oh, I wanna discuss. I have a question.
Oh!
I'm sorry, I didn't think...
No, cool, cool, fine. Pause, timeout. That's a technical, technical thing, I think, in town government is timeout.
Certificate of completion, does that get reviewed by a, a reviewing engineer? I mean, don't they usually have some involvement in, in this? I mean, don't we usually get a thumbs up from the review engineer?
I don't think from the review engineer.
No?
I don't...
No, in the regulations, it says the land use director.
Okay.
And it was handled differently, but I, as you know, I'm a stickler for what the
regulation says, so, um, they followed the proper process. I looked at it. They got, um, a letter that certifies from an engineer that, you know, it's working properly and is required and approved.
We don't have to redo the motion the second, though, do we?
I think it's fine.
You think we're fine? Okay. Um, yeah. Uh, Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Wilsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
An aye from myself.
So, I'll get you a memo tomorrow with my signature and our official letterhead, and that's all you'll need for your closing and your...
Awesome. I appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good job.
So, again, in terms of everything being slightly different, um, the board only comparatively recently began actively reviewing the certificates of completion as opposed to the land use director, um, engaging, basically doing that as the board representative,
Yeah.
which is, my understanding, allowed. But since, uh, once we had an interim, uh, he was strongly wanted our feedback on it and, uh, we haven't talked otherwise, but there's probably a good moment just to turn to the board because it's not even policy, it's just something less than that than what we're doing.
That's why it was unclear to me, yeah.
Yeah, do we want to continue to be the ones to approve certificates of completion? I, I have no problem with that myself, but the board, other members can have other feelings.
Is there anything, like, when we reach the certificate of completion, assumedly all the i's and t's have been dotted and crossed. Are we actually doing anything with our...
I think there's a few that we've recently said, no, not yet.
Okay.
When we've been, when it's been the case where we've looked at and said, okay, yes, there, effectively, yes, there are plantings, but there, we have no evidence that these plantings are going to survive and we, and if we, the planting should actually be robust and surviving. Uh, so, we have had instances where we've wanted to be a little more cautious with it.
Right.
Um, along with some, because we get the really complex stormwater issues where it's like, well, completion for this lot, but not that, and we've kind of looked at and said, but everything's into, the landscaping and everything is intertwined and if this lot isn't done, you can't really say this other lot is because erosion could effectively spread. Paraphrasing what we've looked at over the past six-ish months.
Sure.
Uh, I'll, I'll just put it this way, since we don't need, really need a vote or anything, if anyone wants to stop looking at these, speak up and we'll have that discussion.
Uh, under the current regulations, Mr. Chair,
Yeah.
I don't think anyone else can approve certificates of completion
All right.
of the board.
Okay, not, uh, not, or it's representative?
Legally improper for
Okay.
town, the land use director to approve them and not the permitting authority, but that would be my read and we can...
Great. You, you are the resident expert.
If we're legally required, then we're legally...
Done. Great, not a problem.
Now, I, I'm supposed to do all the work.
Yes.
Give you a recommendation that you can rely on, but that's, that's what I,
Yes.
how I'll approach it.
No, and that's what, what's happened. Again, we've had some instances recently where it has been up to the board, maybe more nebulous, or it's been things where, one sec. Forgive me if I get the technicalities wrong, but where it's a big stormwater permit because it's a bunch, it, it's several lots at once, but they're seeking to free this lot, but not the others. Um, because this lot's done and ready to go and they have a buyer for this one, but we're still waiting on this and...
Yeah, that happens frequently and you're about to have one of those situations as well. Um, somebody selling condo units on a development you approved. How do you release the units for certificates of occupancy? Well, that's a question. You have, I would say it has to satisfy the board.
Mm-hmm.
But you look at the conditions, you look at the decision, what it says, and you require the applicant to provide, provide everything that was required in full up to that unit for which you're releasing the certificate of occupancy. Doesn't mean you have to do the whole site, but you have to do everything that's required right up to, all the way to the line of that unit that's being...
And, yeah, and, and we've had similar, and there's been a couple instances where the board has said, well, effectively, yes, but you're saying it's done, but again, it, it's, it's November and you put in new plantings, so we don't know that they're going to act, that those plantings are actually there as opposed to, you know, you stuck a spade in the ground, stuck a plant in and it very likely won't survive the winter or whatnot.
Yeah, that's important, but it's also important to remember regardless, when you, um, provide a decision, whatever is required in there is required in perpetuity for that permit. So, whether or not it survives, I would be out there in the first,
Mm-hmm.
you know, planting day in the spring saying, put another shrub in there to be, to remain compliant with the board's decision.
Um, the board has struggled with, I think as many boards do know, with the concept of, we do all this work, rightly so, for stormwater, but, and, and we've put procedures and everything in place to help ensure that, that stormwater things are maintained correctly in the long run. But for a long while, we didn't have any of that, so you're sitting here and we're approving stormwater systems with no guarantee. In fact, you can kind of assume they're not going to be maintained and a stormwater system that isn't maintained isn't really a stormwater system anymore.
Happens all the time.
Yeah. Uh, so, that, that's just, uh, the two-minute history of where some of these discussions come from. But I'll move us on because I think we wanna get home someday. Board discussions, there's nothing there. I don't, great. Abutting community notices. Uh, do we have anything? Nope. Wonderful.
Nothing percolating. Oh, sorry, um, do those need to be explicitly, those need to be explicitly outlined on the agenda for discussion, don't they?
Often, yes. Now, we have the flexibility for if something wasn't anticipated. That is in our agenda for a reason, but what's the concern?
Okay, uh, well, I mean, there, there are abutting community notices that I provided in the drive, but because they weren't explicitly outlined, um...
No, I think, I think you can, we have abutting community notices there, even if we haven't called out each abutting community notice individually, especially where this is not a decision-making thing from us, it's an FYI thing. There's no problem.
Yeah, um, okay, cool. Um, there's...
If you get one of those that you have an interest in or a concern about, let's say it's a three hundred unit forty B right on the town line next to a residential neighborhood, you can ask me to go to that hearing and, and report back to you.
But there's nothing stopping Logan from telling us about the abutting community notices coming in. And that's, that's really where we are with this, so. Take it away.
Uh, ordinarily, I emailed these to you in advance as well, so I apologize that I, um, hadn't done that in the weeks leading up to this meeting. Um, the only thing, so, uh, Mr. McLeod, I know you, um, have had an ongoing interest in the MBTA zoning. Um, on eleven oh six, the Shirley Planning Board is, um, doing their hearing on MBTA zoning, looking at their bylaw proposal and some overlay district. Um, let's see. Other than that, there is a residential duplex, um, that the Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals looked at, um, or, no, will be looking at on eleven oh six. Um, there is a change of use in Townsend from a bank to a Starbucks, um, that the planning board is looking at there. Um, and those are the only big three, I think.
We've got a bank that's vacating.
Um, yeah, that actually came up at the Capital Planning Committee. Not, not really directly within the, but like, as discussion morphs, uh, was, the idea was floated that maybe that is something the town would want to consider leasing, uh, even for the, uh, for public access, for the public access TV or otherwise.
I wanna, I wanna remind everybody that I think that our VCD zoning does not allow drive-throughs, but I don't recall, I, I hope I'm mistaken because that bank existed before the VCD zoning. So, would that disallow a reuse of a different sort? Just think, maybe I should talk about this at comments at the end, but, and, and I may be mistaken about the drive-through, but I'm pretty sure we said no drive-throughs.
I don't know what, I have no idea what our bylaw requires for drive-throughs.
It has a drive-through or it had a drive-through?
So, there's a drive-through in the bank, the teller, right?
So, that the use doesn't, regardless of whether they're gone or not, the use doesn't expire for a year usually, but...
Let's say, let's say Starbucks was like, well, if Townsend can support a Starbucks, Ludenberg can support a Starbucks, and we sure like buying banks or whatever. Um, if they were, if a business came in that is not a bank for existence of food, you know, that wanted to have a drive-through.
That would be allowed as a continued use.
Even though it's a change in use from bank to whatever a bank is under our use table to food service. I don't know that...
Yeah, that's not outside of the category. We, we look at category of uses. That'd be a commercial use and that would be.
Okay.
And then, but if the zoning's changed, then it would be illegal, non-conforming use from then on in.
The structure, not, regardless of the use, the structure would be?
Uh, both.
Regardless of the bank use, not the drive-through use. Regardless that, that it was a bank with a drive-through, it'd still be existing, non-conforming structure?
Both, use and structure.
Okay. And then also, not to further confuse things, but Shirley discussion on MBTA zoning is gonna be slightly different than ours because they actually have a station and we, we're in a budding community.
Yeah, and we are in a budding, I don't remember the term, but we're in a budding small town. I don't think Shirley...
They have a station.
Yes, but they're also not...
They're out of compliance, though. Cause they've missed the deadline, I think. Well, no, they're dead...
No, I think they're...
Deadline's December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's enough people flying the finger at that, that I think they're probably gonna be okay.
Well, uh, as well, depending where they are in the process, the state is being forgiving with those who are going in their direction but needing more time to get everything together. All right, I'm, how big is Townsend?
Townsend's...
In terms of square miles, it's huge.
Land...
Oh, no, I meant, I meant in terms of, I am surprised Townsend can support as many chain businesses as it does, which is just interesting. I, I don't mean that, I had kind of assumed they were smaller than us in population, but I have no evidence...
Nine thousand.
They're nine thousand, yeah, almost. I, I, that was the twenty twenty-two census, they were nine thousand.
Yeah, I mean, they, not that I'm looking for us to become populated with fast food in town, but it's, I'm like, huh, they've got a, they've got a McDonald's, getting a Starbucks. Uh, their Dunk's is pretty, I don't know how new it is, but it's a new-ish in the sense of it's not, well, I guess we have a new Dunk's, too, so there we go.
Yeah.
Just nothing more than...
It's surprising, yeah.
Yeah, but good for them. Um, we're also closer to Fitchburg and so we're, we're closer to multiple urban centers and that probably plays in, too. All right, so, committee reports, my friends. It is nine thirty. I am not telling you to cut it short, but I'm gonna try to move us. Master Plan Steering Committee, um...
Uh, we have a town meeting coming up in December and as long as I can get my ass in gear and get an agenda up immediately, uh, there'll be a Master Plan Steering Committee next Thursday.
Great. Wonderful, and as we talked about before, master plan things have been progressing otherwise as well for the areas that can be done. Um, Open Space Committee?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, Municipal Building Design Committee?
So, you'll be happy to hear that the, um, we have shifted back to the first and third Monday, so there's not gonna be this overlap where I have to cut short to get to this meeting, right? Um, so, we, uh, the R, the RFP for the design services and possibly construction monitoring or construction services as well has gone up, there has been a massive amount of response to this.
Hmm.
And it, it's very, it's, it's very good. And, um, and the time clock is ticking rapidly, I believe. There were, there were numerous questions that needed to be asked at the meeting and responded to in a timely manner, and I believe we made that deadline. Um, there was gonna be a site walkthrough. Uh, I believe it was Chris Ruth was going to provide one and Mr. Michael Ray Jeffries was going to be available for a second. Um, again, I was very, I was very impressed with the, uh, with, with the apparent amount of response, um, and, and seemingly quality of respondents because of the language in the RFP. Um, there was a slight, um, because it was mostly crafted, uh, it was, started with the RFP for design services at Marshall Park. There was a, one specific clause that was, that was included from Marshall Park that shouldn't have been included in the, in the new one. Um, but anyways, we've got a, a fairly rapid, uh, pace schedule on that and, um, we have a meeting on the fourth. We have two meetings before our next meeting, so I will have quite a bit more.
It warms my heart to see that group suddenly, I mean, not too suddenly, I know it's been work to do, but getting up and singing again.
It's only been fifteen years.
You know, you put it in that context, you're right, man.
Right?
You know, oh, uh, ICOM, I...
ICOM's still on here. I, I think at a previous meeting.
I, I reached out to, uh, Mary Rae Holman and she was going to check with ICOM and see if they want a planning board rep, and she hasn't gotten back to me. I will poke in that direction again. We can probably take it off unless, oh, we can't take it off unless they say, we would like a planning board rep and then we'll have that discussion. Uh, but I did follow up on that and it was, oh, yeah, I'll get the plan, I'll get the, ICOM to answer that. I think they've probably met by now, but I'm not sure, but I haven't touched base with her. I can do that. Um, Capital Planning Committee, uh, best laid plans of mice and men. Uh, we are into capital planning season. We had hoped to do more of the capital planning portion at first as opposed to the capital ranking, but with the, uh, just frankly, with the tumultuous nature of town government with people leaving positions and everything, um, as well as try, uh, we're not there where we like. with people leaving positions and everything, as well as, we're not there where we'd like in terms of pre-planning, but that means we're going to be working after the new year, which is when the normal capital prioritization has to happen to look more at our five-year outlook and everything else. We have made steps towards getting the submissions to capital planning to be more uniform. That has met with, well, things are more uniform, not as uniform as we'd like, but again, you're, when you're trying to shift habits, that isn't an instantaneous thing. We have, we still need to hear from DPW and IT and Fire are the three. IT was scheduled but did not come on its assigned date, so hopefully we'll be hearing from them at our next meeting. And yeah, everything's going well. Economic Development Committee.
Nothing to report.
The, has, was the meet and greet between our two meetings, or was that before our last meeting?
September.
Uh, that was, I think, between, yeah, that, that happened since, since our last meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, through emails, it sounds like it went really well, I was unfortunately able to, unfortunately able to
I was there.
Okay.
It was another big success. I mean, I got to chat, I got to chat about, for example, the, the upcoming, the quality control lab that we just approved, but I got to talk about the insides and say, "What is QC for rocks?" Like, like, what does this look like? I don't even know. But no, it was, again, it was a great opportunity for new business people and established people, business people in Lunenburg to connect with members of town government, to put faces to names, and so that increasingly that initial contact or prolonged contact, the first time they meet isn't at that podium with us up here. And kind of giving a more human face to it, as well as a chance to hear concerns from the community. Stormwater Task Force.
We're continuing to make progress. There is a hope that sometime in the near future, we're going to be ready to start advertising what it is we've been working on. We're expecting a pretty long advertising period, a year to a year and a half. Yeah, it's about where we are.
Love the talk of a stormwater utility, that would be so good for us as a town. Monticic Regional Planning Commission.
We met earlier this month, I didn't write anything specifically to report back, so next month.
Fair. Monticic Joint Transportation Committee.
Same with MJTC, we had a meeting earlier this month, nothing really pertinent to Lunenburg. A couple new routes were mentioned for the MART buses, and, you know, all that can be found on the website.
Great, thank you. Town Manager Screening Committee. Well, our ad is out there, we worked with Community Paradigm Associates, they did a great job of talking to all the department heads in town in terms of getting basically kind of, what are you looking for in your leader, right? What are the things that you interpret, that you view as needed? What are the strengths, what are the areas the town needs to improve? And overall, put together a big position statement for the town, it's a couple pages long, that gets into, this is who Lunenburg is, this is where we are, these are the challenges we're facing, and is getting it out in front to the avenues that will get the most qualified applicants. People who have worked with Community Paradigm Associates, both towns that have worked with them and individuals who have worked with them to get positions with towns speak very highly of their process, and I can see why, and they're cheaper than the others, too, so it's kind of a big win in every, they do a lot of great work at a budget price. We'll be getting those, I don't have, I could look up the dates if people want them, but we're going to be getting the applications in and, you know, the resumes and everything, and then we will do our screening interviews. It's slower than we would like, it would have been nicer to be able to move quicker so we could have a town manager in place for the conclusion of budget season, but not on the cards. Yeah, that's where we are. Minutes' approval for September 9th, 2024.
That's a lie, I don't have those.
Oh.
I fully meant to, but
No worries. Meeting schedule, all meetings for the planning board are at 6:00 PM at Town Hall unless stated otherwise. Our next meeting is not until November 25th, there is no meeting on November 11th because that, my friends, is a federal holiday. So planning board will not be meeting on Veterans Day. Next meeting is November 25th, and after that will be December 9th. Public comment, looks like we have one member of the public out in there.
Uh, no, it's actually, it's all, it's all staff.
Oh, okay, cool.
Slash boards.
Fair.
Could I quickly be public? On the topic of meeting schedule, I had poked around at what some other towns did, and some posted their, the dates of their upcoming meetings and the associated filing deadlines with that meeting publicly available in advance. I think that was something I had asked you guys about many, many moons ago now, but just wanted to get a general sense of like, if meeting dates are posted in advance, because I know things change sometimes and whatnot, how far out you guys would want to be doing that, if that would be like a six-month thing, year thing, not at all. Either way, when folks call me, I, you know, am more than happy to keep answering their questions and such, but I figured that information should probably be accessible to the public, or is
My thought on that is, I mean, because these are all calculatable things.
Yeah, no, it's like, I had to go back in, you know, 25 days in advance, "Oh, you have to go to this Thursday, and then, oh, the ledger only publishes on this day," and that's an algorithm that spits out a certain date that the public needs to know.
Yeah, no, that makes total sense. My only concern would be, on the rare but extant occasions, we do cancel a meeting because we know we're not going to have, we're not going to have sufficient board members. I think of one that we didn't cancel, but then only Matt and I showed up to years ago, because it was like December 27th or something. It was like, and we did it remotely.
And we live for this kind of stuff, too.
Yeah. Now, that was one where the board's like, "We're going to be there," and Matt and I and Adam were there, and we're like, "Well,
Yeah.
Hope everyone had a good Christmas, how you doing?" No quorum. I guess my only thought would be, it might be worth including a note that these are the planned meeting dates.
Yeah.
Like, like, a little bit of CYA, but
The examples I saw, I should have mentioned, did have that, there was like, you know, big asterisk at the bottom, like, "These are tentative dates, if something is important to you and will come crumbling down, call and confirm," but
Do we, so, what do people want, or do people care? What Logan chooses is how far out we post ahead of time.
His discretion is fine.
On the agenda?
No, this would be like a completely separate, like, just a document that says, "Hey, here's all the planned dates of the year, here's the corresponding filing deadlines." If you guys like, I could get an example document of what I'm talking about from like another town and have that before you just took glance at, or I could email it to you.
I think we already say the second and fourth, so I think that that would be anticipated anyway, so to list the second and fourth, the dates of the second and fourth Monday, I think would be completely, you know
And then it would just be also like, "So if you're doing site plan review for November 25th, you need to, if you want site plan review on November 25th, you have to have everything submitted by date X prior."
Yeah, that, that information, I had to even scrounge that just for my own purposes, and the regs, I believe, say 21 days, but when you look out practically with like, getting things submitted to the ledger and such, it comes out to somewhere more like 25.
I, to me, that sounds great, because I can think of the number of times people come in and go, "But I have it in, you know, I have it in on date, you know, 21 days prior," and it's like, "Well, okay, but, yeah, but there's other steps that can't be met now because other things have to happen along with this, like getting the ad out at an appropriate time."
Yeah.
I think if you can make something that is accurate and informs the community, that to me sounds wonderful, it's just imperative that that document be triple-checked for 100% accuracy.
Absolutely, and I could attach a CYA to it, and also, it need not be a static document, it could also be something that's updated on the website, depending on, I know we've talked previously with Kara about access and such, but there are options there, I just wanted to kind of gauge where you all were at.
Are we comfortable with trusting Logan with this, because this is in some ways more of an office function?
I think he is amazingly trustworthy.
Yeah.
Shucks.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't
Great, wait, this sounds amazing, you know what you're doing better than us.
Thank you.
Please continue to be better at your job than we could be, that is outstanding. Well, than I could be, I'm not going to speak for others. All right, other public, well, now we just go to board comment, I think. Y'all are troopers, that's my comment.
No, just appreciate having the land use director on board.
Oh my God, having a full office is the most amazing thing in the world. And, and also, very seriously, Chris, thank you for being patient, as we all do iron out what it's like to work together.
Yeah, you're a great board, I've had a lot of them, and you guys really work well together.
So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Tekken.
Moved and seconded. Mr. McLeod.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Willsner.
Aye.
Ms. Reed.
Aye.
And an aye from myself. My friends, thank you for joining us tonight, participate in master planning, fall in love with stormwater utilities, and have yourself a great day.